Okay, let's get this started. Good evening. Look at this turnout. I want to thank all of you personally for being here. We're going to talk about some sticky topics tonight. Things that are complex and don't have easy solutions. But what I know for sure is that when I look around here, this many people showed up on a Tuesday night that we care as a community. Now, we may have different viewpoints tonight, and it's okay to disagree. All right? But there are a couple of ground rules I want to go over. Tara, can you go to the next slide, please? Let me go where we're talking about. I'm going to introduce this. We've got some community experts we're going to talk to. We're going to invite public comment. Some of you have already got registered to speak. If I don't have you, we'll give you a chance to stand up and have comments. At the end, we'll close and talk about maybe some solutions. Just some ground rules, though, as we do this community meeting. First of all, this is not a city council meeting, and it is not to be construed as such. Just to make things easy for elected officials, anybody currently elected will not be allowed to speak tonight. So we're just going to keep this amongst the community, let them listen. Most of you are who voted in our elected officials. So they are there to do your bidding. They need to hear from you. I don't care if you disagree with me. If you think I should be thrown in jail, please call your elected official and tell him that. They need to hear from you that you expect solutions, okay? So let's go to the next slide. We'll talk about some ground rules. First of all, this is not Facebook, okay? You are going to stand up, say your name. We see your face. There's no fake names. We are going to respect everyone's opinion. You can argue with me, okay? But otherwise, let's ask questions. Let's dig a little deeper. Let's open up our minds to possibly different things that we have not considered before. So I challenge you. Open your minds, open your hearts, and let's work together. You're going to hear two really different sides tonight. I think that we can work together for a solution. Rule number two: Please don't yell or shout. This is a community meeting. We're going to treat each other like adults. We are mostly adults here. Wait your turn to speak. I promise, if you've got something to say, we will make sure you get your chance to speak. If you have a question for a speaker, I want you to send that in via Facebook. So Facebook message, the Be Better Colville page. There's a blue button, Send Message. Click that, and we will ask your questions of speakers. Okay? Now, if we need to go back to somebody, we will. But send in your questions. I've got Tara Hatch helping me moderate here at the middle table. My role tonight is to help bring you together, bring some experts to discuss the issues. I want to talk in facts, you know, not in "I saw this cab show up here," or "Barry Bacon shipped in a bus of people here." So we're going to avoid, if you didn't... I don't want any hearsay, okay? So let's deal in facts as we go through this tonight. I know some of you tonight are here, and you are very angry at me, and I am truly sorry from the bottom of my heart. It is my intention to get as many people involved in here as we possibly can. It is... It's not fair to anyone to have a homeless camp pop up in their neighborhood. I know. I've been dealing with it for six months. I've seen drug use. I have seen needles. I've seen trash. I was even made aware of sexual trafficking in our little town of Colville. And when I heard this story, it didn't go the way I thought. So some of these people will share their stories with you tonight. I hope that at the end of this meeting, we can push our politicians to take immediate action. Tomorrow morning, I hope you write to your council members, your mayor, your commissioners, and tell them that you want action. I am prepared with a team of concerned community citizens to assist the city in any way possible to help clean this up, and we're willing to do it tomorrow. So this group of guys has cleaned up trash, taken three loads of trash to the dump, and done everything they could. So with that, I'll start the presentation. Next slide. Okay. I pulled this out of something called the Homeless Plan, okay? And this is something that has to be sent in, I think, every five years now. Maybe used to every 10 years. And I pulled this slide out because it talks about the fighting homeless. People who are living in a place not meant for human habitation, an emergency shelter, and transitional housing, or exiting an institution where they resided for up to 90 days. Okay, that makes sense. People who are losing their primary nighttime residence, which may include a hotel or motel. Families with children or unaccompanied youth who are unstablely housed and likely to continue in that state. People who are fleeing domestic violence. And practically homeless, who this just keeps popping up to be a problem. I was shocked when I read this plan. Our vision: No person left living outside. Our mission: Support homeless crisis response systems that efficiently reduce the number of people living outside or in a place not meant for human habitation. Guys, this is why we're here. That is the number one reason why we're here is we don't like what we're seeing, right? Compassion is not looking the other way. The guiding principles... There's a whole committee that worked on this, and this was signed off by the commissioners and sent to the state. All people deserve a safe place to live. I agree with that. Urgent action is the appropriate response to people living outside. Guys, it's been six months that I've had 10 or 12 people camping behind my business. It's hard. That's not okay for anybody. Interventions must be data-driven and evidence-based, and we'll work closely and collaborating with all other local agencies. There are a lot of agencies providing service in our county. Some of them, they're stepping on each other, they're not working together. It's because I don't feel like we have a holistic plan to bring that all together. I don't have that plan for you tonight either. Experts much smarter than me can make decisions on mental health and drug abuse. But I know that we've got to do something. So let's go to the next slide. Here's a couple of the homeless who've been in town. We know that the homeless population is about to explode in Stevens County. Existing homes are selling at the fastest rate they have in years, and they're all selling at record prices. When you pay more for your house, the means of rent goes up, right? If you're a landlord and just bought a house, you're charging more in rent. Fuel prices, grocery prices, utilities, truck prices, they're all going up. Rents are going up. Is your income going up as much as all your bills are? This problem is about to explode. If you think we've got a problem of the day, let's see what happens next year when all this free money that the state's been giving out runs out. And is the economy going to get better in 2022 than it was in 2021? I don't think so. I hope it does, but maybe not. We need to be ready. The reason I want to have a meeting today, tonight, and force immediate action is because this problem is going to explode, and we're not ready. We don't have a plan to do anything, okay? Next slide. Okay. Why does our law enforcement not enforce our laws? There's one thing I'm absolutely positive that every law enforcement officer I've interacted with wants to enforce the laws. They want to. They don't like what's going on either, right? Okay, so this is not here to put down our police officers. And some of them are going to tell you tonight that I'm part of the problem, and I'll agree with them, okay? But they can't do anything. Their hands are tied. They've been told you can't do anything. So we're going to talk about Martin versus Boise. We're going to hear a couple of legal opinions tonight. The jail doesn't take them, whether it's COVID, or they're full, or this... The jail doesn't take them. The prosecutor doesn't prosecute. Ah, that's a little flimsy, a little... It's trespassing on Cory's lot. Yeah, this is really not worth our time. And then homeless fatigue. Over the last 12 months, I've called dispatch 50 times complaints about the homeless, whether that was defecation, urination, drug use, fighting, trespassing, whatever it was. 50 times. And in those 50 times, how many times do you think someone got a ticket or got arrested? Zero. That's a number. Okay, now, I'm not blaming them. They can't do anything. So the goal tonight is to put the power back into law enforcement's hands to do something. Okay? So whether you are saying, hey, we don't want homeless here, or, hey, we need to build a shelter, the first step we've got to do is give the power back to our city and back to its law enforcement members so that they can enforce the laws. Now, what laws are being broken? Let's look at some of those. Next slide, Tara. I know this is fine print. I will make it possible that all of you can get a copy of this deck tonight. Unlawful use of public property. The purpose of this chapter is to prevent harm to the health or safety of the public and promote the public health, safety, and general welfare by making public property readily accessible to the public and to prevent the use of public property for camping purposes or storage of personal property, which interferes with the rights of others to use the areas for which they were intended. So what's that mean? If I want to take my kids to the park, the park is there to be enjoyed. It's a clean... Does Colville not have one of the most beautiful parks of any small town around? I mean, YPAM is awesome, right? It is super well-maintained.
The most trees too.
And what?
The most trees too in your park.
Thank you, Nick. So we've got a beautiful park, and that sometimes it's not somewhere comfortable for my kids to play, right? Have we ever... We felt that before? So it's because public property was not designed to be used for camping, tent camping, RV camping. That's not what it's for. It's designed to be used for recreation. They say camper camping means to use public property for the purposes of habitation. We've seen that. Camp facilities include but are not limited to temporary shelters, tents, vehicles, or recreational vehicles, camp paraphernalia, cots, beds, sleeping bags, blankets, mattresses, hammocks. Habitation means to remain, or the intent to remain, for more than eight hours then to sleep. And public property means and includes city parks, city riceways, and every place in the city of Colville that is publicly owned or maintained for public use. Guys, well, that's everywhere, right? That's everything the city owns falls under that category. So unlawful camping. It should be unlawful for any person to camp, occupy camp facilities for the purpose of habitation, or use camp paraphernalia in our own public property except as permitted under a variance approved by the city council. I looked. The city council didn't approve of variance. Not that I can find. Unlawful storage of personal property. It shall be unlawful for any person to store personal property, including camp facilities and camp paraphernalia in our own public property. This is everything we're talking about. This is the problem. This is my pictures that you're seeing. Let's go to the next law. Next slide, Tara. Littering. Who likes litter? Who likes trash? I've picked up more trash in the last two weeks than I probably will the next 10 years. Junk means and includes all old appliances or parts, old iron, metal, glass, cardboard, lumber, wood, old mattresses. Anybody seen any mattresses? Litter means it includes all other waste paper and discarded materials. It says right here, it's unlawful for any person to throw or to drop or leave any junk, refuse, or litter upon public property or another person's private property in the city or any waters within the city boundaries. Guys, our city has a lot of rules. In researching this, the code is unbelievable, the amount of ordinances they've got out here. There is a rule for everything. I thought, man, I hate rules. Why are there so many? But when I got to reading them, can we agree there's a reason for a rule for no littering and no camping? That's for... That's for the health and safety of the entire community, not just a few. Let's look at the next slide, Tara. Rubbish on streets and sidewalks. I'm proud of the town I live in. I live here. I like the traditional values, the conservative nature. I like living in the woods, somewhere rural. I even enjoy the snow. But the rubbish, it makes our whole town look bad, right? Let's take some pride in our city. No person shall throw or deposit in any street, sidewalk, or alley of the city any broken glass bottles, crockery, nails, stones, bricks, mortar, earth, gravel, wood, shavings, garbage, rubbish, paper, or any other material or substance whatsoever. Okay, we have the rules. Let's say, this is not okay. Why can we not enforce our rules? Let's look at the next slide. Parking regulations. So up until about June, we typically enforce this. 72-hour parking limit. No parking of vehicles allowed on any street or alley within the city limits of Colville for a continuous period not to exceed 72 hours. Now, I don't expect the police to drive around and say, oh, how long has that one been there? But when somebody calls in and says, hey, it's been sitting there, and you drive back by three days later, that's about to be somebody's home if we leave it sitting there much longer, okay? I saw a vehicle last week that was covered in mold and mildew and looked unhealthy to begin. And it wasn't two days later before somebody moved in. Nobody should live like that. So it says, no owner or operator should be allowed to grease repair or change oil on any vehicle in the street right away. We've been seeing that too. They have the option to enforce this by getting the vehicle towed, and that's in here. So let's give the power back to our city and our police. Next slide, Tara. What are we going to do to get ready? These are tough questions. So I want to bring up a couple of speakers to get the evening started. My job, my goal tonight is to be your moderator. I will may ask some questions of the speaker. I'm going to call you up front. If you have some questions for me, feel free to ask, okay? So let me pick out our first speaker. Kim Gallo. Feel free to use the podium and mic if you need it.
We're the people.
We're the people. It's not just about... I'm a little shorter than this. Thank you all for coming tonight. This is such an important issue for our area. You know, I grew up here. I know a lot of you guys are from here. When I grew up here, I used to walk around the streets. My parents let me go to the pool. I didn't ever have to worry about being unsafe. When I moved back here 10 years ago, I let my kids do the same thing. Now, I don't let my kids come to their grandparents' house unattended because across the street from their grandparents' house is a homeless camp. At least it was until two days ago. A homeless camp where they are selling drugs. And this isn't an accusation. I watched them sell drugs on probably no less than 10 occasions. I watched our friend Danny Sanders do a drug deal about 10 times. Did I call the cops? Of course I called the cops. The cops come down. They respond to me every time. And then they leave. Why? Because of Boise versus Martin. Because they feel like their hands are tied. They feel like they don't have any support from the city or the city council or the mayor. So they go back and they go home, or they go back to work. The jail's full. So even if they see them and they act, they don't arrest them because there's nowhere to take them. For the last six months, we've been doing this. I work nonstop, for those of you that know me. Sometimes I work at 9:00, 10:00 o'clock at night. When I go to work at night now, I carry a gun because I am not safe going to the building that I pay taxes for. My elderly parents live across the street, and I leave them to go home at night, and they are not safe in their own home. You know, these guys are doing drugs. We know that for sure. We know that they have mental issues. We know that they have drug issues because they've admitted to it. There's an elderly woman that's living in a car down there. She's come into my store asking for help. She's been telling me about rapes and stabbings, and she's got things on video also. And I tell her, call the cops. And she says, oh, I can't. I'm not physically fit or mentally fit to do that. Why is she living in her car? We're not against people being homeless. We want to find a solution to why they're homeless. But we are against the behavior that they're exhibiting. We are against them using profanity at my mother because she asked them not to use her dumpster. We're against them littering on our streets. We're against them using my property, Cory's property, Delta Dental's property to let their dogs go to the bathroom, for them to go to the bathroom. You know, we're against not being able to have our customers feel safe to come to our businesses.
We're the Santa camp somewhere. We're all people. We all shit the same.
Yep, and most of us use a bathroom.
Hey, we're going to speak, and we'll have our turn. Please wait your turn.
Okay, what do you hear? Will you please wait your turn?
Absolutely.
Okay, please go ahead.
Thank you.
We're against the litter, like Cory said. We're against the fact that they don't pay tabs on their vehicles, that they don't park appropriately on a street. If I park, double-park on a street, I'm probably going to get a ticket. You're probably going to get a ticket. Nobody's giving them a ticket. So what can we do to help? I mean, there's been all kinds of ideas thrown around. We've talked to city officials. We've begged them. We've pleaded with them to see what we can do. I've done a lot of research on what's happening in other cities. What can we do? What's working other places? They're met on deaf ears, and that's why we're here, and that's why we're frustrated. I just want my city to be safe again. I want my kids to be able to walk to their grandpa's house if they want to. I want them to be able to go to the pool. I don't know if the mayor's here tonight. I haven't seen him. But he specifically, high rough, told me not to let my kids go to the park. That's not okay with me. We all pay taxes on that park, and it's a beautiful park. And my kids can't go there and enjoy it, and certainly not unattended. In the last six months, we have seen it go from one homeless person living on the street where they were marking his cars and his tires every 72 hours to more than 10 vehicles. I asked them, why are you here? They said, because we can't be at the park. We got kicked out of the park. Well, who told them to come down to my business? A lot of you in here own businesses. Do you know how hard it is to get people to shop in a business where they don't feel safe? You know? They're coming down there at night. It gets dark at 4:00 in the afternoon. They don't want to shop there at night. They don't want to buy a car from Cory when they can't, you know, when they're walking around a parking lot wondering if somebody's going to jump them. That's what we want to end. We want to find a solution that works for everybody, including the people that have to live here. And it's getting cold. You know, it's getting very cold. It's not going to get warmer. It's not going to get better. And that passage that he read, you know, that was from the City of Colville Municipal Code. Government is very clear. Our founding fathers were very clear on how to run a government. Local, state, federal, period. All we want is to enforce our own local laws created by our own local people. If we have a problem with Martin versus Boise, then we need somebody who's going to say, you know what? If the state comes after us for that, then we'll take on that problem later. We'll fight for our city, fight for our people that pay taxes, fight for the safety of our community, and hopefully find a solution that works to where the homeless... You know, they're not going away now. It's too easy here for them. Hopefully, we can find a solution that's humane for them and get them some services to where they can get out of being homeless. Homelessness should not be a permanent state. It should be a temporary state.
Okay, we're... Hey, guess what? Time out. Time out. Everybody's going to speak one at a time. We're not... Hey.
Hey, no, no yelling here. Absolutely. We're going to have you sit outside. You can flip me off. That's okay.
Okay. Hey, can I point out that we're here for you, and you're giving us a finger and walking out the back door? Okay, this is why we're not live. All right. Kim, thank you so much for going to share your testimony. Guess what, guys? You cannot take... You cannot take a broad brush and paint all homeless people. Nick, are you keeping an eye on that back there?
Thank you.
Okay. You cannot paint everybody the same brush, okay? Unfortunately, some of the crowd that hung out in front of Kim's location were the ones that were a little hard to deal with, right? We've all known a mother, a brother, a sister, a cousin, a neighbor who's been addicted to drugs. It's a nasty disease. It starts with a choice, but then it turns into a disease. There's lots of reasons why people are homeless. But we're going to talk about that too. But please, 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 let's go one at a time. Next up, I want to see Chris Burner for Delta Dental. Chris, are you in here? Thank you for being here, Chris.
Well, first and foremost, I just want to make one statement here that I'm not representing Delta Dental at this point. I'm their facilities manager. I manage... Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay. So I work for Delta Dental. I'm their facilities manager. I am not representing Delta Dental in this meeting here, but we have 117 local residents that are employed by Delta Dental. And those folks turn to me for the security of their buildings and also their safety. You guys are mentioning six months. It was December 19th of last year that the bus moved in, three days before we opened up that office. And I knew it was going to be a problem right there. It's been about the last six months that we've seen the rapid influx and occupation of that entire street. We have employees that are afraid to go to work or leave the office. Now, especially now that it's getting dark. We're struggling to find an outsourced security company. There's just nothing in the area around here. So I know we got a lot of business owners out there. I've talked to some other security companies out of both Spokane and Sandpoint that would be interested if there were more than one contract. In other words, Delta Dental is not big enough to have them open up an office for security in the... For just one business. But if there's anybody else that's interested in that, please reach out to me. We can probably pull some resources on that. We dealt with everything that everyone's already talked about, the defecation of the parking lot and all that. One thing I do want to mention, we called the police on several occasions because we have problems with people loitering or trespassing on the property, generally after hours. And the police department's been absolutely fantastic in dealing with that if it's on private property. What's happening on the street there, I notice they can't do a whole lot about at this point. But the private property, they're doing a very good job. It's just keeping up with that, being able to have... Most of our folks inside that office are tied to a phone. They can't drop a phone call to go call the police when we have somebody coming onto the property. The... I don't know if anyone's seen the video that's floating around out there about the interview with those folks, but I've interacted with almost all of those guys that are in that video. And there's only a few of them that I would say are dangerous that would come onto the property. But they would generally take off before the police arrive. But in the times that the police have been able to get there in time when there's still somebody on the property, they've handled the situation very effectively. So not saying that they don't do what they're supposed to. On private property, they're doing a fantastic job. That's all I got.
Chris, thank you. If you don't mind sharing, I don't know if I can ask this. Well, how much did Delta Dental invest in that new facility?
It's in the millions. I can't say exactly what the dollar amount is, but it is in the millions. Yeah. Maybe later on, I... Let me talk with some folks to see if you can disclose that. But it was a significant amount of money that was invested into Colville.
It's a beautiful facility. Now, do you think if we're able to put a little more of the power back to the police, that private security would still be required?
It would depend. Potentially. We will probably address that. We take the safety and security very seriously, especially for the employees. The safety issue is very serious, so we would probably still pursue that route.
Chris, you don't live in Colville, do you?
I do not.
This is Colville. We don't need private security, all right? We have private security.
I understand that. So we're...
Okay. Chris, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Lori, were you interested in speaking? I think Chris told most of the story there. I've got a request that I didn't have on my plan, but I'm gonna give Chemo Morrison the floor.
I don't know that I need this microphone, but I'm gonna try to use it for you guys that can't hear me. It's surprising if there's anybody that can't, but... I'm a local business owner and I'm also a 30-year drug addict and alcoholic. I've been homeless before. Now, it was definitely self-induced. And, you know, I didn't have anybody to blame but myself, but there is many hundreds of issues that can push somebody to a homeless state. I've been quiet about this issue and a lot of issues in this town for a long time. Couple years ago, an incident involving my son has forced my hand to go ahead and step up to the plate. Because I was so angry about the situation initially, I kept my mouth shut and that has caused a lot of speculation in this area. Just like people not talking about the homeless and not getting out and meeting these people and knowing these people individually like I do almost every single one of these on a first-name basis, you know? Speculation's a bitch when it's slapping you in the face. And I'm sorry for the kids that are here that heard that bad word. I do apologize, but, man, there's gotta be something to say about what you hear and what you know. And what I know is that these people are human beings. And as a Hawaiian, I am a humanitarian and a warrior. I will stand up for these people, I will feed them, which many of you people are very angry at me about. How do I know that? Because you drive by and flip me off and tell me I'm a piece of shit, when I am feeding them and that I'm encouraging a problem. This problem is not gonna go away. For those of you that think you can shoot these guys and shove them off into the Colville River and hope they, they don't come up over, you know, Myers Falls Dam over there and plug it up for your beautiful Columbia River, there's gonna be 20 more of the homeless them out there. These people are people. And until we start looking at them as people and human beings and we're treating them as drug addicts and homeless rats... Hush, please, for a moment, I'm speaking. Thank you, Mike. I'm done with this and this community that I grew up in. Being a small child here, brought here about three years old, I suffered my own problems in this town and I grew through them. But this is an epidemic. You know, the whole mask BS and COVID, it's as well a problem, but this is truly the epidemic we're facing. The homeless are gonna be us pretty soon. I'm two weeks from being bankrupt at any time. I'm paying six times the food price for my food business, for my restaurant than I was last year. You don't think that I won't be living in the, the motorhome and a camper I just had to buy because I am worried about that shit? Man, that could be me in two weeks. You wanna call me in a they and a them, whatever? I don't know if that's a sexual orientation or just something you guys wanna throw at somebody you don't like too much. But what I have to say is, I don't care what you got to think about me or what you think about them, but they are people first. And if you wanna not talk about how to deal with these people in a humanitarian way, then we can duke it out. And I'm gonna tell you, I'm gonna treat you like the person that you're treating these people like. I mean, there are issues to deal with and there are issues to talk about. And there's a lot of, you know, people saying, "Blame the police for this." It's not the police's problem, okay? Now, the experts on that stuff already talked about it. I don't talk about that stuff. But this is the truth. These guys can't enforce the laws that are there because we're being mandated by, you know, whatever you wanna say liberals, whatever. I don't care. We're being mandated by people that won't allow these laws to be enforced for whatever reasons I don't understand. I know, I don't understand how all the laws work. But what I do know is that if we grab a hold of those laws at a local level, right here in this room, just outside of this room, we can take back our city, 'cause it's ours. I'm not ready to give it up, but what I am, I'm gonna sell out before this bubble pops and march the hell out of here with my head held high and say, "Guess what? This community didn't have the balls to step up and take care of the people that are overflowing into this community when they need help, and I'm done." So, I don't wanna be forced to get out of here, but by God, why not take advantage and go out somewhere else where I don't have to look at people in the face that I grew up with when they call themselves followers of God that I don't understand, when you can turn your back on the needy? That's where I feel about it. My name's Chemo and I'm an addict. And I'm proud to be here and represent the homeless people in this community and feed them every night. I don't give a shit what you guys say about that. Thank you.
Thank you, Chemo. So, Chemo, let me ask you one more question before you sit down. Are you telling me that there is a way to handle this problem and still treat the homeless people with respect? Let's all try that, thank you.
I do it every day. I do it every day.
You show tough love, Chemo, I appreciate that. Okay, next, uh, we're gonna go one more concerned resident from that street and then we're gonna pivot. Mr. Dick Nichols, Councilman-elect Dick Nichols, would you like to say anything?
My name is Dick Nichols and my driveway ends about 150 feet from the pictures that Corey was showing earlier. So, that is my neighborhood and this is my home. It is a concern. And take exception to Chemo for a minute. It's not these people, okay? It's citizens of the community. Some have a home and some of them don't. But they are all worthy citizens of our community. Do I like driving down my street and seeing a car that has rubbish and garbage stacked up underneath it so there's no more room underneath it? No. Do I like seeing four campers, six cars lined up and have difficulty driving down the street if somebody else is coming the other way? No, I don't like that. But I also don't like the idea that there is no solution. Some solutions are gonna be difficult. Some are gonna be long-term. I know the mayor has talked with the city council on some issues, but they're gonna be long-term. It's gonna be a year or two years before there's a meaningful answer or direction. And he needs to be applauded for that. But I, I'm concerned about tomorrow, November the 17th. 'Cause on the 18th, we're gonna have a snowstorm. And then it's gonna get down to 24 degrees. And then we're gonna have six inches of snow. And then it's gonna be down to zero. And there'll be individuals who will be unprotected from the elements. So what can we do to help them? I, I've talked to Corey a couple times. No, I've talked to him more than a couple times. I've talked to him a number of times. And I, and I think there are situations where we can find temporary, not long-term, but temporary solutions where we can provide services to include maybe a temporary shelter of some kind to help individuals who are living in a car or living in a tent. And I see down behind Rural Resources, the other day, there was a couple more tents up along the railroad tracks. So there's individuals living in tents along the railroad track. I was thinking that maybe the, the situation in my street would go away as soon as they got a foot of snow and the mayor had snowplows go down the street and put this nice berm of snow along where everybody was staying. But Corey worked with a number of people and was able to help facilitate a temporary modification to those people living in their automobiles and campers. Who has a responsibility for these individuals? We all do. I believe that as a tax-paying citizen, my tax dollars can be spent to help. But I also believe that individuals who are in a homeless situation can come forward and help, help me find a way to help them. If it's job training, job employment, substance abuse counseling, veterans with PTSD, we're gonna run this whole gamut of, of problems. I'm sure that you could went down the street there where Corey was talking about and you probably could have had a different situation almost for every person that was there. Physical, mental, emotional, financial, all reasons why they may have been there. So there was not a one fixed solution. So I, I want us to be able to speak openly and discuss individuals in our community and to be able to work together to find the direction that we could go tomorrow. And we could go to the mayor or to Corey or to Chemo or Dr. Bacon or someone else and say, "How are we gonna pull together tomorrow to find an immediate and temporary," and I wanna use that word temporary, "immediate and temporary help for anybody who may find themselves in a homeless situation?" I read the Harvard Law Review on Martin versus Boise. And in that, I think it was narrowly interpreted, I read the one judge's comments that said, "It's unconstitutional to identify a homeless individual." But it's not unconstitutional to define an illegal act. So it doesn't matter whether it's me throwing garbage down the street or the individual in the car down the road from me 150 feet throwing garbage into the street. I expect to be treated the same. So anyhow, that's all I got to say.
Dick, thank you very much. You have a lifetime dedication to this community and I truly appreciate it. After this next speaker, we're gonna pivot slightly. He talked about Martin versus Boise. I do have some people here to discuss what exactly the implications of that are and how we can get around that. But I'm gonna switch gears for a minute. I wanna make sure we hear all sides. I truly mean this, that everyone's opinions will be respected. This next person actually made me cry. Autumn, I want you to come up here and share your story. And Autumn also wrote a poem. And I want you to see, this is what the story of homeless looks like to a family member, okay?
Hello, everyone. It's an honor to be here. Can you guys hear me all right? Great, I'm Autumn Stenberg. When I came across the Be Better Colville's post on our growing homeless issue, I found myself activated, emotional and reminded of the deep and repressed grief that I have carried for my mother. For me, homelessness is more about understanding the root cause and exploring solutions based in compassion for humanity. When I was 16, I witnessed my mother have a mental health breakdown. She was throwing our belongings in the dumpster, destroying things and ranting about things that made no sense. We were evicted because she was unable to cope, would not answer the phone or pay rent even though she had the funds to do so. She took my car and left me to fend for myself. My mother remained without her own housing for nearly 10 years. To put into words the hardship I experienced in dealing with my mother as a young woman is difficult beyond measure. When I was 21, a single mom myself, I drove by the park and there was my mom curled up in her truck. It was heart-wrenching to see my mom, who I loved so much, without a home. With the support of family friends, I was able to house her for five years before getting, getting her back into government housing. During the five years my mother lived with me, she stole things that were valuable to me, ruined pictures by cutting holes into faces, made weird concoctions of hair, food and random items around the house. One year, she was pulled over for driving too slow and arrested for a prior offense. I worked several jobs, had little resources and used our Christmas money that year to bail her out of jail. When I got her out, she was angry at me for not getting her out sooner. It was challenging and yet my love never ceased because she is my mother. Jean. The pain and suffering I witnessed through my experiences with my mother changed my life in more ways than one. I am who I am because of the generous gifts I have been given and the reflection of my own suffering and the suffering of my mother. But what I haven't yet mentioned is the stories my mother told me when I was a child. Stories of her childhood, horrendous stories of abuse. She was abused in ways unimaginable and suffered several traumas throughout her life that led to a trauma-induced psychosis, heightened PTSD, anxiety, a diagnosis of schizophrenia. My mother's death led me into a life of education and a search for deeper meaning. My mentor, Dr. Gabor Maté, says, "Trauma is not what happens to you. It's what happens inside you as a result of what happened to you." "Trauma is that scarring that makes you less flexible, more rigid, less feeling and more defended." End quote. I get that there are no easy solutions for this issue, but please open your hearts to the possibility of what if that someone was someone you loved dearly? The responsibility should not be put solely on one person or family member as it seemed for me as a young woman with my own internal struggles. In honor of my mother and those who struggle vocalizing their deepest needs of connection, care and compassion, I would like to share the following poem that I wrote at 2:30 a.m. this morning. Could you hit me the water? Can I... Excuse me, I just gotta get some water. Thank you so much. Yes, right? Thank you. Perfect timing, see? That was blessing in disguise.
I paid him five bucks to do that.
Connection. My mother once told me, "Cinnamon means sin no more. Sin no more." What a nice gesture. Before that, it was, "You were an accident. I am no longer going to hide. Some days as a child and sometimes still, I sense shame for simply being alive. Family inheritance. Love is not an easy thing. Love is even stranger when your mother is labeled crazy, missing some teeth and without shelter. This love, it is not always tender. This love not only lacks food and money, but the beautiful smiles missed on the outlined face of mother. This love. Others may judge in the warmth of their homes while others shiver in the cold. This love will test every ounce of patience, every doubt and fear in existence until we come to realize fear is an emotion to befriend. Doubt is a distraction from love. Was it an accident I was born? Was it an accident for us to end up without a home? Does it really matter? Like any accident, life is full of surprises. Suffering is not the enemy. Helplessness is not the solution, but a dark place we visit and sometimes an empty hole we forget to leave until we notice the vacancy in our hearts when we have gone too deep and stayed too long. We need help. We need a voice, we need hands, we need our dignity. Hopelessness is not who we are. Compassion is the way we will see through each other as mirrors. There is no hiding the wolf and the mountain is high. Who are we in this world if not kind? Cinnamon. I have it in my morning coffee every day as I dream what it would be like to live in a world where there is more compassion for not only some community members, but for all. This love, this love is real. Thank you.
Wow, that's some powerful testimony. I mean, that in itself... What if that was our mother? What would we wanna do? So, Autumn, thank you. I know that was hard to share, but you are awesome and I super appreciate it. Okay, we have a few other guests here I wanna move to. We'll circle back to some community citizens. Is Chris Montgomery in the room? Oh, looky there. Chris, please, if you don't mind, if you'd step forward to the podium. I know you've had a long day. Your assistant said, "Hey, he's strong, he can take it." The city attorney unfortunately was unable to make it tonight. He had some obligations in Cal Falls. He did share his opinion with me. And then Chris is gonna give you his legal reading of Martin versus Boise and then we're gonna share two other ideas along the same way. So let's hear the legal side of, "Why can't the cops do anything?"
Hi, everyone, my name is Chris Montgomery. I'm an attorney here in Colville. Corey asked me to pinch-hit here and so I am pinch-hitting. I'm in no way an expert on this. However, I did wanna put in context this case that everybody's all excited about. And that is, it started in a federal district court in the state of Idaho. There's only one. It's in, it's in Boise. And it went from there to the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals. And that's an interesting story, which we'll get into in a second. And then it didn't go any farther than that. And the only next place it can go is the U.S. Supreme Court. And it only gets there, not as a matter of right, it only gets there if the, if there's conflicts in the decisions of other district courts throughout the United States or other circuit courts throughout the United States. And, or it's a discretionary pickup of a review by the states or by the U.S. Supreme Court. And we all know from the news media that we read and hear about that they don't take every case that comes to them. And sometimes, you know, we hear news about they refuse to take cases. And so the law stands as decided by a circuit court until they decide to do otherwise. And that's pretty much where Boise is. But the interesting part about Boise... But the interesting part about Boise is that the Court of Appeals, Ninth Circuit, it's stationed in San Francisco. They do have a panel that comes to Seattle. And so there's nine judges, and they hear cases in panels of three, and that's what they send typically to Boise, or I mean, to Seattle where Boise would have gone initially. And then that, there's a term called "in-bank," and "in-bank" is if you have all nine justices sit on the panel and hear the case. And one of the criticisms of this is that the decision in Boise was made by a panel of three judges, not the entire nine judges that constitute the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals. And I just want to read to you a short comment by one of the judges that dissented because they requested after the decision that the panel, that the in-bank Court of Appeals hear the case. That means all nine judges, not just three. And they refused to do that. And this was one of the judges that says, wait a minute, that's not right. We shouldn't have done that. His name was M. "In one misguided ruling, a three-judge panel of our court badly misconstrued not one or two, but three areas of binding Supreme Court precedent, and crafted a holding that has begun weakening or reckoning, wrecking havoc on local governments, residents, and businesses throughout our circuit. Under the panel's decision, local governments are forbidden from enforcing laws restricting public sleeping and camping unless they provide shelter for every homeless individual within their jurisdictions. Moreover, the panel's reasoning will soon prevent local governments from enforcing a host of other public health and safety laws, such as those prohibiting public defecation and urination. Perhaps most unfortunately, the panel's opinion shackles the hands of public officials trying to redress the serious societal concern of homelessness. I respectfully dissent from our court's refusal to correct this holding by rehearing this case in bank, all nine judges." So we have three judges out of nine making a decision. We have the rest of them saying, we're not going to make it go to the full panel, and so we're stuck with this. And whether we like it or not, and it's based on the Eighth Amendment to the Constitution of the United States. And so that doesn't mean you quit trying. That doesn't, and it is very fact-specific. And it is a narrow ruling, but it provides a lot of confusion and consternation on the part of public officials. I agree with Corey's statement that that doesn't mean we can't try. That doesn't mean that we can't start at the local level enforcing our laws and see what happens and avoid maybe the traps that are set forth in the Boise decision. And so there is a municipal research corporation in, it's actually in central Washington, but they provide guidance to all municipal agencies, any state-affiliated agency whatsoever. And they have published guidelines for dealing with the Boise decision. And so they're, they address such things as unauthorized sitting, lying, or camping in public places. If you watch the news or read the newspaper, Spokane's dealing with that on a regular basis. So it's not unique to us. And they have other captioned areas, examples of ordinances, codes and procedures regarding encampments, soliciting aid, decisions regarding solicitation, and then they have pedestrian and vehicle interference and loitering, and recommended resources. So these are available to all public agencies, but let's get to basically the crux of the Boise decision, which it's interesting. So the whole case starts with, it's alleged that the citations, these people were cited for violating the Boise ordinances, and they were cited under the city's camping and the city's disorderly conduct ordinances. And this court found that they violated the Eighth Amendment prohibiting cruel and unusual punishment. So I agree with the comments of people, you know, let's show compassion, let's help our neighbors, but, and that's, but they're saying we have to avoid cruel and unusual punishment. I don't think anybody would disagree with that in principle. And then they point out that after this litigation began in the Boise case, that their many ordinances were amended, trying to attack that particular issue, the cruel and unusual punishment, and to prohibit enforcement against any homeless person on public property on any night when no shelter had an available overnight space. And they get in-depth and talk about that. I think that's one of the community discussions here in Colville is whether or not, you know, what kind of availability do we have for homeless? One of the things that this jurisdictions are dealing with is how do we dance around the Boise decision and still enforce our laws? I heard some speakers speak of things like trash, human defecation. There's lots of other ordinances that can be enforced that apparently are not being forced out of an abundance of fear that they're somehow going to get crossways with the Boise decision. And you don't know until you try because it is very specific, and it's case-specific, fact-specific, and is not a broad brush by any sense of the imagination. But the whole focus on the Boise case was, the panel held that as long as there is no option of sleeping indoors, the government cannot criminalize indigent homeless people for sleeping outdoors on public property on the false premise that they had a choice in the matter of where they stayed. So they concluded that enforcing those ordinances did in fact violate the Eighth Amendment prohibition on cruel and unusual punishment. And they said that the Eighth Amendment bars the city from prosecuting people criminally for sleeping outside on public property when those people have no home or shelter to go to. And they had, in specific, the two ordinances, and it only applies to these two ordinances. There was a camping ordinance in Boise that made it a misdemeanor to use any of the streets, sidewalks, parks, or public places as a camping place at any time. And then the camping ordinance defined camping as the use of public property as a temporary or permanent place of dwelling, lodging, or residence. Now, the other ordinance that came under scrutiny was called disorderly conduct, and it banned occupying, lodging, or sleeping in any building, structure, or public place, whether public or private, without the permission of the owner or persons entitled to possession or in control thereof. So basically, they agreed with the plaintiffs in the case, saying that it is cruel and unusual punishment. And so then they get into a discussion about the various homeless facilities that are available in the city of Boise and surrounds, and they come up with this formula, so to speak. And there's a lot of talk in the case about things that really don't matter to any of you, and they're all procedural in nature. They're legal hurdles and obstacles to both pursuing and enforcing these ordinances. But to get to the guts of it, they said, "The city had not met its heavy burden of demonstrating that the challenged conduct, enforcement of the two ordinances against homeless individuals with no access to shelter could not reasonably be expected to reoccur." But they say, "We emphasize that the special order was a statement of administrative policy, and so could be amended or reversed at any time." What happened was, they went back and they said, "Look, if all the homeless beds are full in Boise, then we will not cite anybody for violating either one of these ordinances." But that was a policy, and it wasn't an ordinance. It wasn't enacted as law, and they were just pointing out that they could change that willy-nilly at any time. And so they found that that wasn't good enough because that policy could be revoked or rejected at any time. Then, so they have this, and it's somewhat of a dog chasing his tail. I mean, he's probably never going to catch it. And that's part of the problem, and I'm really glad that Corey's putting on this forum, if you will, so that you can share ideas because it's not going to come from any one person. I don't have the answer. Corey doesn't have the answer. But this case says, "A city cannot, via the threat of prosecution, coerce an individual to attend a religious-based treatment program consistent with the Establishment Clause of the First Amendment." So one of the shelters in Boise required that you attend their religious program in order to stay there, and if you didn't do that, you'd be kicked out. And this policy that Boise enacted relied on a self-reporting of the homeless shelters saying, "We're full." And if they didn't, but one of them had a policy unwritten, a policy of never turning anybody away, ever. And so the Boise police never got the phone call that says, "We're full. We have no room at the inn." And so unless they got that, they would continue to issue these citations for violation of these ordinances that they had. And so they talk about some other cases, and I'm not going to get into that. I want to get more to just the heart of this thing. They talk about a case called Ingram that talks about cruel and unusual punishments clause not only limits the types of punishment they may be imposed, but it prohibits the imposition of punishment grossly disproportionate to the severity of the crime, but also imposes substantive limits on what can be made criminal and punished as such. And it concerned whether imposition outside the criminal process. So in that case, the paddling of schoolchildren constituted cruel and unusual punishment. That was the case they were relying on.
Chris, do me a favor. I literally have a list of 30 speakers here, and you are the smartest guy in the room. Sum up for me what your thoughts are on Martin Merson Boise and how it affects the city of Colville enforcing those laws.
Well, that's a dog chasing his tail comment, and that basically is, what most people glean out of this is that you can enforce these types of laws if you have a place to send the homeless people and there's a vacancy at the inn for them to go. And that's the part I see as the dog chasing the tail because if we make that available and they keep shipping people here from out of the area, then how do we ever get ahead of it? And the motive is great, the concept is great, and if we met that burden as a community and provided those shelters at taxpayer expense, that's great if we had some control over the influx. But that's the part I don't quite have a grip on, is how we would control that because my own observations, as everybody spoke ahead of me, is there's been a tremendous influx of homeless, and I think that some of that is coming from out of the area. It's not all homegrown. So we try to address it, and then we can't get ahead of it. And so that's, but that's what Boise says in a nutshell, is that, here's the core of the case. "We hold only that so long as there is a greater number of homeless individuals in a jurisdiction than the number of available beds in shelters, the jurisdiction cannot prosecute homeless individuals for involuntarily setting, lying, or sleeping in public." Now, that's pretty narrow. Some other people have mentioned other ordinances. Colville, Corey pointed out at the beginning, a number of ordinances in the city of Colville. And I think you can empower law enforcement to enforce the laws on the book that aren't contra to this decision and the Eighth Amendment. So that in a nutshell, I believe, is what Boise stands for, and it's pretty narrow. But I just have a concern that we're going to be the dog chasing the tail. And that's a good community discussion, and it's a good community solution to find out how we can stop that.
These are tough problems. That's why there's 300 of us in this room talking about it. Thank you so much. I appreciate that. Give a round of applause. Okay, I do have another lawyer here to speak to us, but before we go that route, I want to pivot for just a second. We're talking to the experts now. Housing, the number one problem is there's nowhere for people to go. Raise your hand if you want to rent a home and can't find one right now. Okay, of those with your hands in the air, are you homeless? No, you just want to find a new house. Hey, George. All right, so let's bring up Cruz from Rural Resources. He can tell you about the housing programs and how big the need really is in our area. Cruz, thank you for being here. I really appreciate it.
I'm Cruz Thompson. I'm the Emergency and Transitional Housing Manager at Rural Resources. I'm just here to go over a little bit of what we have been doing over the last year, the amount of services we've provided. And I've also, I've been with the agency for seven and a half years, providing direct services to homeless households, homeless clients, and households who are at imminent risk of becoming homeless. And over those seven years, our women's shelter has served almost 400 women and children who are homeless. And since October of 2015, when we opened the men's shelter, we've served almost 200 homeless men. So in this last year, our women's shelter here in Colville has served a total of 44 people. 26 of those are children. We've been able to successfully house 30 of them. Two of them chose to relocate, and there's currently 12 in the shelter right now. Our men's shelter, we've served 27 people. Six of them were homeless vets. We've successfully housed 15 of them. Four chose to relocate, and there's currently five in the shelter now. We also, we also receive emergency rental assistance funds through the local homeless document recording fees. And this year, we have served 20 individuals, consisting, or 10 households consisting of 20 people. All 10 of those were also literal homeless households that we've been able to get housed. We also provide rental assistance through the Consolidated Homeless Grant. That is a funding source from the Department of Commerce. This year, we've served 26 total individuals, 10 households. Eight of those were also literal homeless. And we also receive the Housing Essential Needs Program, which is for individuals who are either temporarily disabled and are unable to work, or for those who are applying for social security. We've served 25 people through that program, and of those 25, 15 of those were homeless. And the last emergency rental assistance program we have is the Emergency Solutions Grant. So far this year, we have served 18 households consisting of 35 people, and 12 of those households were literal homeless also. Currently, we also administer the Section 8 HUD program, which can provide a lifetime subsidy program for households. We have 426 vouchers available for our service area, and that service area is Stevens Ferry, Lincoln, and Ponderay County. Of the 426 vouchers, 364 are currently being used, and we have 77 vouchers that have been issued, but nobody can find housing. So the biggest issue that we have as direct service providers is finding landlords who are, one, willing to work with our clients, and, two, and just in general, finding any available rentals. We currently have six literal homeless households. Three of them are sleeping in their vehicles. We have three in shelter, working full-time jobs. They cannot find a rental. That's really the biggest issue. If we can get more landlords who have available rentals that are willing to give our people a chance, we have success. We just need more, more options.
Cruz, thank you very much. So here's the guy that has to deal with this all day, every day with the frustration of not being able to find some homes. Let's invite up one of the landlords that has rented some of the homeless people and ask how his experiences were, is Mr. Andy and ask how his experiences were, is Mr. Andy Haidorn in the building. Come on up, Andy. Andy's the owner of the beautiful Benny's Inn. Tell us your experiences, Andy.
Thanks, Corey, for putting me on the spot a little bit. Let's see if we can get this fixed. How about if I just take it out of here? Will that work? Somebody else has got a mic on here, too. Is that your guys? I'll try not to goof it up. So my name's Andy Haidorn. I own, manage, operate, all the above, Benny's Colville Inn. Those of you that don't know me, I see a lot of unfamiliar faces in the room, but maybe you know me. My family's had the property since it opened in 1966. I grew up on that property riding a tricycle, riding a big wheel. Some of you may not know what that is. I work with probably every entity that will put somebody up at the hotel, whether it comes from Rural Resources, whether it comes from a business, whether it comes from a Vista, whether it comes from the federal government, meaning Forest Service, DNR. I work with just about every entity that'll come to this town. The last few years has been one heck of a challenge. And that challenge is why most of us are here tonight. We wanna hear what's going on. We wanna hear some solutions. We almost wanna battle back and forth. But I'm really proud of everybody here tonight, being able to listen and work through these things. Each and every one of us who are here tonight have had some challenges, I think, somewhere, somehow. Chemo, you share different sides of the story, one extreme to another, almost. You've been there. You've battled for some of these folks. You battle against some of these folks. I think when I make that statement that somebody like Chemo, somebody like all of us, Corey, Cruz, even battles against some of this stuff because of the legalities. It all comes down to accountability. We're all humans. You bet your butt. We all should be here to take care of each other somewhere, somehow, lift each other up. But there draws a line of accountability. And when that line gets drawn so many times, everybody gets bitter. And that is frustrating, to say the least. Corey makes a comment that, "I'm a landlord." Well, I own the hotel, so I'll share some not very direct stories, but situations. Like I said, we work with a lot of different entities. Folks coming into town. One of my biggest frustrations the last few years, I work with the churches. I work with Rural Resources. I work with DSHS. I work with Counseling Center. I know I'm missing a handful of others. Some of those people that I work with are in this room tonight that those entities have paid for to stay at my motel. Some of those people in this room have destroyed my rooms. Some of those people haven't. Some of those people have destroyed a room, come back a year later and apologized. Why? Because they became accountable to their actions. We have rules. We have laws for a reason. Every single one of us need to abide by them. We need to have respect for each other. Chemo talked a little bit about some of that. And I look out across this room and I see some great business people. I see some great teachers, people involved in our educational systems, people involved in our counseling entities, lack of better words. Each and every one of us have a position that we need to follow. And how do we do that? Oh, boy. It's tough these days, isn't it? It's really tough. I see people that come into my motel. They're getting paid a room to stay there, whether it's one night, a week. Sometimes it's 30 days. Sometimes those people leave in two because they don't have respect for the property. They don't have respect for other guests coming into the property and staying. I'm sure at least 3/4 of you guys in this room, maybe even every single person that stayed in the hotel somewhere, somehow, under your own dollar and expected a good night's sleep. When I have somebody come in that's getting paid for and they don't treat the property correctly or with respect, it bothers other guests. Those other guests don't know that somebody else paid for them to stay there. They go online, they write a bad review. They don't know. I have a pretty darn compassionate heart. Some of those folks who know me have seen it before. Some of you who have endured it on the other side have also seen it. There's folks in this room right now, tonight, that I had a really stern talking with last night. And they saw a compassionate side of me because I'm willing to give somebody a chance. But when that chance gets blown time after time after time, where's the accountability? That's what's tough. We see it online. Those of you who have Facebook, boy, I wish I didn't. We start flipping through the pages and all of a sudden, we're ticked off. All the junk going on out there. I'll tell you, it's an awesome, awesome tool for both sides of the equation. But I'm not here with a solution. I'm not here with an answer. I'm here to share what happens at my property. I've only shared a couple of little incidences. 90% of the folks in the last year and a half that I've worked with that somebody else has paid for to stay there, I have a problem with. I have a saying that if you're gonna get somewhere in life, you know the handouts don't work. It just gets you along a little while. And you're not gonna change something unless it hurts bad enough. And we've got a lot of enablement going on. Now, where do we draw that line? We talk about compassion. Chemo's compassionate and a warrior. I definitely don't wanna be on the side of that warrior. He's a big boy. But that compassion and helping folks out, where does that line get drawn for the enablement or the handup? It's tough anymore. It's really tough. Like I said, there's some people in this room that I've worked with over the years that have stayed at my place, and maybe I've kicked them out. Well, I know I have. There's people in this room that I've kicked out of my property. They're not allowed to stay there anymore because they weren't accountable to having respect for the property. We talk about other businesses here. There's a certain level that respect has gotta be honored. There's rules, laws, regulations for a reason. Each and every single one of us have to follow them. Unfortunately, today, COVID... COVID? Is limiting a lot of things on both sides of the equation. I think we agree on that, both sides of the equation, the good and the bad, and the interim. How do we work through it? Don't have the answer. I don't. That's why we're all here. However, with all those frustrations, both sides of the equations, for those folks that don't have a place to go, for those folks that feel like they're getting treated like crap or getting kicked out of the street, well, there's a certain level of accountability. There's also a certain level of accountability out of our governing systems. They have a fiduciary responsibility, period, to each and every single person in this room, not just the business owner, not just the homeless, to each and every single person. We've seen a lot of changes with our last elections, locally mostly. But locally, regionally, and even some state stuff, they have a fiduciary responsibility to us as a people. We elected them. And it's time that they take their balls out of the dresser drawer and go to work.
Mic drop right there.
I heard that one somewhere. But it's the absolute truth. Some of these things are being handled with blast gloves. Things need to be handled correctly on both sides of the equations. And all I'm asking for is accountability. So hopefully, we can keep working through that tonight. Corey, I think you're doing an awesome job facilitating this, bringing in different sides of the equation. So with Montgomery coming in with some of the legal stuff, we've gotta know those things. We've gotta understand those things. We can sit on Facebook and run our mouth all day long, but until we know the absolute truth and the law, we got no spot to run our mouth. So some people might say, "Well, you just told them to take their balls out of the dresser drawer and go to work." Well, we can run our mouth about that because we need people to go to work and fight for all of us and protect us all, both sides of the equation. With that, I think I'll finish up. So thank you all for being here tonight. I know I'll see you again somewhere, somehow. It's a small town, so... Corey?
Thank you, Andy. I super appreciate that. Okay, so let's switch gears a little bit. Guys, I know we've got some speakers lined up. I literally have 30 people on the list. I'm gonna get to everybody if we're here all night. But let's speed this up just a little bit because we're gonna burn through a bunch of people. I've got a timer set up here on the desk. It has a five-minute timer. We're gonna run five minutes for now for the next couple of speakers, and then we're gonna move to three minutes after that in an effort to keep this moving and give everybody a chance for something to say. So talking about solutions, let me just kick the hornet's nest for just a second. There is a lot of discussion about the Commissioners and the Homeless Fund, right? We've all heard terrible things about what they're doing with that. I don't know anything about the past. All I know is we got three men, we have two men here, who care a whole lot about the community. We're compassionate as a people. Colville is a compassionate town. For all the, we're talking about accountability. What we're gonna say is we're gonna give you compassion with accountability. When I first moved here, I moved from North Carolina, and everybody said, "Oh, Southern hospitality's the best." North Carolina ain't got nothing on Colville, Washington, or Colville, Colville, Washington, okay? So as a people, we take care of our neighbors. So I know that on Sunday, my neighbor's not gonna bug me. But if he sees me in the ditch on his way home, he's gonna help me out. Those are the best kind of neighbors, right? We can all agree there. So these guys, they're our neighbors. They live in this county. I promise, they don't like seeing this either. I can't quite use the terms that Andy used for the politicians. I am not a politician, and I promise you tonight, I will never run for office. I don't know what you guys were thinking. It's a horrible job, and I'm up here saying, "I don't like the job you're doing. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. You have a hard job, and you're gonna have to make tough decisions." That's why the mayor gets the big bucks, right? Just for the record, his salary is $12,000 a year. He is a volunteer. Thank you for your service, Mr. Mayor. So look, here's the Homeless Fund. This was a little harder to get than I thought, and I know you can't read these numbers. I will provide these to everybody. In 2015, at the end of the year, there was $472,000 in there. In the 16, 531, let's fast forward. 2021, on November 9th, there was $1,432,871 and 26 cents in the Homeless Fund. Now, that looks like a lot of money. I saw a report. What does it cost a year to run a homeless shelter? Okay, I heard $300,000 to $400,000. So every year, increase to imbalance. This year, they're expecting an excess of $216,000. Last year, $346,000. Well, real estate's been good. Do you know where this Homeless Funds come from? Will you go backwards the slide, Tara? I don't know how to do it either. So these are recording fees. This is the chart that shows you. Out of every recording fee, $30.58 goes to one fund, $7.20 goes to another, and there's some money in there to administer that. This is where the money comes from, is recording fees. Do you think recording fees will be higher or lower next year? These happen every time we transfer property. I think less property's gonna sell next year. I don't know. You can debate me with that, but long-term, 2020 and 2021 will go down as some of the best real estate years in the history of Stevens County. I don't expect that trend to continue. Right now, we have people from other locations in Washington or Oregon... California. I don't wanna say it too loud here. So that are moving to our area. They are selling their house for $3 million, and they're buying this cute little place with a little bit of land, and look, it's only $375,000. And we're all getting priced out of the market, okay? I don't have $3 million spent on my house. I didn't just make $3 million in my property value. So we all gotta live here, all right? This is our community. Let's not give away what makes Colville and Stevens County to the outsiders. So go back to the next slide, please, again, Tara. So there's $1.4 million in there. Guys, why don't you just do something? You got all that money, right? So, oh, wait, you are spending some of the money. New family. Somebody will discuss this a little bit later and tell you more about that. But basically, mothers with children are expecting, that money goes there. Money given to Rural Resources. So in 2015, new family got $48,000. Rural Resources got $34,000. The Warming Shelter got $5,000, and there were some other miscellaneous expenses. Over the years, look at the Warming Shelter. It went from $5,000 in 2015, $7,000 in '16, $6,617, $5,418, $9,919, $32,000 in 2020, and $140,000 this year. Now, I think the Warming Center does good work, okay? They, John Horton, are you in the building? I'm not gonna put you on the spot, but how many people spent the night at the Warming Center last night?
15, and that's $70,900.
I understand. There's some accounting here going into play. I spoke to the treasurer there, and it's, there were some upsets and things done at the Warming Center. But you had 15 people there because it was too cold to sleep outside, right? It's too cold to sleep outside. So I think the Warming Center's doing some good stuff. Gold stop. This is the bus that runs back and forth to... What?
Men's Shelter.
Oh, that's the men's shelter? Okay. Sorry, I got a bad intro there. So the men's shelter, which, by the way, raise your hand if you knew we had an active men's shelter in Colville. Do those guys cause any problems at all? Okay, I'm embarrassed to tell you how often I eat at McDonald's. If I turn this way, you can probably tell. Those, I don't ever see any problems going on there. It's not trashy. It's not messy, and the place is well taken care of. The problem is just not enough beds. Cruz is who runs that, but there's a problem down there, he goes down there and kicks their butt. That's the kind of people with consequences, okay, that we want running these types of places. So as we go, the Warming Shelter, I believe, is important, but we're keep getting this excess amount of money. So what I truly believe is, we may not have the budget to spend $400,000 a year. If we're out of money, we're gonna be broke. I can do that math, right? But I do believe there is some money there to do something, and that's what we're gonna be asking you for, is, hey, I know you are fiscally responsible gentlemen in the Commissioners' office. That's what you're known for, right? That's your job. Thank you. I appreciate that. But I do think that we need to use, this money is a tool. It is a resource for us to dip into, and we need to look at the best uses of that money. So you can see the chart at the bottom. Over time, we've had a little more increases to our imbalance, and our expenditures do show a rising trend. So if our recording fees go down, that account is not gonna continue to grow. I also think that due to public perception, the Commissioners are a little bit timid to reach into that fund again. I'm here to tell you, Mr. Commissioners, there's nobody in this room that'd get mad if you spent some of that money on the homeless, okay? Nobody'd get mad. We want you to help fix the problem, okay? I mean that. I truly mean it. All right, so I wanna switch gears now and introduce you to somebody who, in the community, he has dedicated his life to helping people, okay? You may feel that he is an enabler, but there's nobody that does more for homeless in the town of Colville than Dr. Barry Bacon. So Dr. Bacon, do you please come and take the floor and tell us a little bit about what you do? and tell us a little bit about what you do? And I'm sorry, I let everybody in front of you go 12 minutes. I'm going to start enforcing the five-minute timer.
Thanks, everybody, for coming this evening. It's good to see you all here. Appreciate it. So I came here in 1990, and I've been working as a family doctor for the last 31 years. Raised my family here, and that means I'm a newcomer, still a new kid on the block in Stevens County. I want to make three statements, and then I want to tell a story. And then I think I'll be done. The first statement is, we have never bussed anyone to Stevens County or Colville. Hope Street has never done that. So if you could take that story and put it where it belongs, I would appreciate it. The second is that we have never handed out flyers in Seattle advertising Hope Street. Please take that and put it in the same location. The third is, we have never put up billboards in Seattle. I've heard all of those, advertising Hope Street and bringing people here. Why would we do that? That doesn't make any sense. We would never do that to our community. I want to tell you a story. A young preacher told a story about a man who fell among thieves and was thrown to the side of the road, and he was left there to die. And a religious person, according to this preacher, walked by on the other side and then realized that maybe he was a Democrat and decided to keep going. And then a second religious person came by and realized, oh, maybe that's a homeless person. Probably should get a job, and kept going. The third person came by, and he realized that the man was dying. And he went over to help this man, and he had compassion on him. He bandaged his wounds. He took his coat and wrapped him up, and he took him to a hotel, probably Benny's. And he took care of him. And he fed him, and he gave him water. And then when he had to leave because he had business elsewhere, he said, would you take care of him for me? And when I come back, I'll make this right. The preacher asked the question, which of these three did the righteous thing? Everybody in the audience knew what the right answer was. Every single person. The other night, there was a young lady that was knocking on Hope Street's door. She wasn't elsewhere. She came to Hope Street, and there she was. She was somebody's daughter. And one of our team members happened to drive by, and she realized this lady was kind of out of her head. Can't always tell if a person's on drugs or maybe if they're suffering from mental illness. They almost look the same sometimes. But it didn't matter to our team member. This was an opportunity to show compassion. So she opened the door, and she helped this person to clean themselves because she realized that she had human excrement running down the back of her legs. So she took her inside. She helped her to wash. She talked her down using some techniques that she'd learned. She wrapped her in clean clothing, and she gave her some food, and she gave her some water, and helped her get back to her place, which is the back of a truck. Over the course of the next three weeks, she continued to check on her, connect her to services, bring people to help her, and realized that she was sick and she needed medical help. Took her up to the hospital, got some medical help, got some medicine, connected her to other facilities. Ended up in a hotel where she was cared for. My folks up at Heartland Medicine got involved. They heard that story as well. It was somebody that they happened to know, and so they went and visited her, got her a care package, and took care of her. The reason it's important to us is because this is someone's daughter. Could be anyone's daughter. But it doesn't matter to us. The people, I am so proud of the people that I work with, the team that I work with, for the way that they respond with compassion. And as I go to our board meetings and I listen to them talk about what they do and tell the stories of people who are success stories, and they are there. There are people who are moving their lives forward as a result of the intervention of Hope Street. And we don't allow addiction to happen there. We don't allow people to use drugs. We're accountable, and we keep trying to move them in the right direction. Every day, that's our goal, is to try to move somebody in the right direction. Ask them what they want to work on. And have we kicked people out of Hope Street? Absolutely. We are accountable. You notice that Hope Street is not on the list of recipients of money from the county commissioners. We've never been on that list. We don't get any money from them. But we applaud those who are working for homelessness. We invite every other agency that is like-minded to come and work. We think it needs to happen under one roof. We need to stop working in silos. We need to come together. And if you want to think about some solutions, which we think there are solutions out there, we think those solutions should be things like this. Bring every agency together. We heard that in the Homeless Plan. Doesn't happen very well. If you look at the Homeless Plan from 2012, you'll realize that homelessness happened, was here well before Hope Street was invented, before it got started. We did not cause homelessness. We just think there are better solutions. And we're trying to end homelessness as well. When homelessness is ended, we will happily close the doors of Hope Street, and we will walk away. Because that's what the Homeless Plan for Stevens County says they are about, is ending homelessness. We would like to see the investment of money in people because that $1.4 million represents people's lives. My wife and I, bless their heart, decided to start a business this year, hiring homeless people, taking rundown homes that are not worth, that are not fit to live in, and making them beautiful. And we're not ending homelessness with that project, but we're giving them jobs because they're human beings who deserve that. They deserve a chance. It's important to us. So we need additional housing. In five years, when RJ Keach was the city planner, thank you, Mr. Mayor, there were five, my understanding is about five homes that were built during that time and six that were demolished. So we're not making progress when it comes to housing. We need to make progress with housing. It's one of the major issues. And if you're a homeless person, how are you going to compete when there's no housing to be had? You know, you can't do it. So there are countless people who have stepped up and volunteered their time, and they have come unsolicited and stood with us. So we thank you. All of you who have come and contributed to making life a little more bearable for homeless folks, thank you. I make no apologies for the way I live my life. I will stand with the righteous people, and I will do the right thing. So join us. Thank you.
Dr. Bacon, three questions. Hey, look at that. It's applause. How are you funded? If you don't get any money from commissioners or state, how do you get money?
We've scrambled together to get some grants from various organizations. There are people who have stepped up. Walmart has given money. Lady Elks from Kettle Falls has stepped up. Churches have stepped up. Other people that believe in what we're doing have come forward. We created a clinic up here. Heartland Medicine funds to the tune of about $10,000 every quarter. We believe in it. We're investing in our community in multiple ways, by trying to bless our community, by creating a place where people without insurance can come and be a member there, where prices are more reasonable, where they can find good health, good care. But we also, part of our mission is to give head forward to our community, and that includes Hope Street.
Two more questions. Say that the city sanctioned the homeless camp, trying to get around this Martin versus Boise and clean up our streets. Would Hope Street provide outreach services at that city sanctioned location?
We already do, and we would continue to do so, yes.
So you go to the homeless?
Yes, we do. We have an outreach program, and that's our director that heads out.
All right, well, let's introduce her. Dr. Bacon, thank you very much. We appreciate your service. Is this Teresa Lane in the building?
This is a scary thing for me, just to let you know. So my name is Teresa Lang, and I'm the director of Hope Street. I'm a recovering addict of 19 years. I've been through lots of trauma. I've been in and out of hospitals, rehab. I've been homeless. Two years ago, after COVID, I ended up going to live with an ex-boyfriend, and it didn't work out there, and I ended up living in my car. I was then working at New Alliance and staying at Andy's joint. I was a good person over there, though. So, you know, what I'm here for is not, my job isn't about a status. Those people, those homeless people are people. I care about them to no end. I meet them where they are. Connection is huge. I will go out during the weekends. I have six wonderful volunteers. Hold on, I'm nervous. So on the weekends, we have volunteers. There's a couple of us that go out. We know where everyone is staying. Everyone is sleeping. I'll fill up my car with water, coats, depending on the weather, blankets, anything, and I'll go find them. I know where they live. I know where they sleep. I know what they need. I know their personalities. I know their mental illnesses. And, you know, being diagnosed with mental illness in my life, that is kind of where this all comes to, I believe, is trauma, and the mental health system is broken. I don't want to blame anybody here. Every time I call upon the police, the law enforcement, they come to me. They do. But they can't do anything about it. They sit there, they talk through stuff. I've called on DCRs. I have housing that comes down. I have job support that comes down. Rural Resources, Sarah, Cruz. But you know what I really want? Is I want us to work together as a community. This pisses me off. This hurts my heart to see that people that are just acted like they're nobody because they are somebody. They're our mom, they're our sister, they're our dad, they're our uncle. They are human beings. And we look at them like, those people, yeah. Yeah, what do you think this does when we have trauma? And it's not being taken care of with mental, our mental health, our medication, connection, saying, I believe in you, saying that you have value, you have worth. It's not just another kick in the dirt. It's not. Like, why can't we come together as a community and help each other? I know it's about dollars and money. But you know what? What would Jesus do? Huh? What would he do? What we need to do is come together. I will do anything. I am determined. I have motivation. I have the energy. I have ideas, and I will go, and I will go, and I will go. I didn't get this job just so I can help people. I got this job so people can know that they have worth and value and that they are worth it. So let's get together and be a community and help others like you, and you, and you. Because you all matter.
Give her a round of applause. Teresa, I love her spunky. You're the perfect person for that job. I'll tell you a little something Teresa won't tell you about herself. She's little, right? Y'all see that? Okay, she kicks people's butts day in and day out, whatever it takes. She speaks softly, but she carries a big stick. So before we get to the next speaker, let's pick out somebody here of the homeless population. Torch, where's Torch? Go get her. Come on. So look, I'm trying to tell a story. I apologize if I didn't call you in the right order. I'll throw you on the list. I promise you'll be next, okay? So Adrian, I want you to go stand at that podium. This is the citizens of Colville and Stevens County. They are concerned about the homeless. They're concerned about your welfare. They're concerned about where you put your trash. They're concerned about where you're pooping, okay? So I want you to get up here and tell them your real-life story, the dirty parts, the ugly parts, all of it. So get up there and tell where you're pooping. I want you to know homelessness is real. I've lost it.
So I'm Adrian Hansen. Most people who know me know me as Ari or Torch. My family is actually back there, and all of us are currently homeless. My son-in-law, myself, numerous others that I know of, are all looking for jobs. I lost my daughter back in June. Lost my job a week later, lost my place to live less than a month after that. Been looking ever since. My car is currently, yes, not tabbed. Unfortunately, I just got it. I'm tabbing it on the first. I agree with you guys. Homelessness is not okay. None of us are doing okay. My daughter's fighting a case for her son. My other daughter is currently waiting for her boyfriend to get out of jail. And she's more of a sister-in-law because that's my little brother. We are all trying to stay clean, trying to clean up the streets where we can. Like, dude, Cory donated a trailer to haul out all the trash. Everyone that was along that line will tell you, I knocked on all the doors. Told them to get the butts up. It's time to clean. It's not okay. We should not live like this. We clean up our trash. We bag it up. We go to your parks, garbage cans along the street, drop off a bag at a time. I've got a friend coming up, I think next week, to try and help repair at least one of the trailers. We deal with guys not exactly being gentlemen. We deal with theft amongst each other. We deal with drama. We go through most of the same things that you guys do. Yeah, we don't have a stable house, but we go to like 76, Chevron, that's open 24/7, grocery outlet, Walmart, wherever has a bathroom when we can't. When we can't, we try to find somewhere that there is an open bathroom. Like, I walk all the way to Chevron Like, I walk all the way to Chevron from where we used to be camped. None of us females walk alone. Ever. Myself included, including my child, have been molested by fellow homeless. I've gotten on a lot of their cases. Dude, if it's not your property, don't touch it. If you see garbage on the street, pick it up. It's our community too. Yeah, we may not be people you guys really want to associate with or you want to see. Because we're not doing the best. We're not in houses and we don't have most luxuries like showers, food every day. We worry about where our next meal's coming from. We worry about our pets. I currently have three dogs. One of which is being trained for a service dog for somebody else. Think it's responsible and great life for that dog. We struggle daily. Hell, me and Sasha, the other one in white, have balled our eyes out to each other about how done we are. How about how we just want to give up. I'm nine months clean off methamphetamines and years upon years clean off of heroin. And I looked at her just the other day, bawling my eyes out, saying, "Dude, I can't do this anymore. I'm done. I don't care. I just want to go relapse." She looked at me and went, "Why?" I have an 11-year-old daughter that I wouldn't want to see out here. My mom worries every day about if I'm okay, if I'm safe, where my next meal's coming from. Hold on. It's not easy. But I guarantee you, if and when the economy fails, web goes down and everything else, and everybody else doesn't know what to do, we will. We will. Nobody else will, but we will. Because we live it. Day in and day out. Yeah, it's not easy and yeah, there's a lot of resources that could be put up or whatever. Like Portland's got, there are porta-potties everywhere that have a blue light so that junkies can't shoot up. Spokane has UGM and a couple other shelters, which honestly, for the women, get full very quickly. I'm still on a waiting list for two different shelters. Still haven't gotten a call. I've still got hundreds ahead of me. My daughter is on a waiting list for housing. It doesn't help us right now. Yeah, there's a lot that we could do differently. And some of us do choose this life. Some do. Not all of us. Not all of us are the same. Like, I come from an abusive past and running from domestic violence. Others are running from themselves, honestly, and don't know where to go. And as weird as it might sound, yeah, Rural Resources and Hope Street and I think New Alliance have therapists and everything. But most of those therapists haven't been through half of what we have been. And unless you've been through it, you can't really relate to it. You can't. I mean, before I was ever homeless, my parents used to downlook on anyone that was flying a sign. All night long, my kids, my friends, anybody else who's homeless, screw asking for money. Screw people and their money. Fly a sign saying, "We'll work for food." "We'll work for blankets, whatever we need." Like, none of us knew that there was a winter storm coming up. I definitely didn't. Sasha, did you? We're not prepared whatsoever. We have one trailer that's not livable that we're trying to clean up. We have her trailer that's falling apart. No offense it is. And we've got me and my car with a split gas line. None of us are ready for this. None of us want to be in this position. Like, as is, I'm going to Spokane for food banks. I mean, yeah, you guys have, I think, one or two here. But that doesn't really do much. I can go to Spokane in one day and hit three different food banks and feed every trailer and car that was along Washington for almost a week. If done right. It doesn't take much. It really doesn't. I mean, we're willing to put in the work to work off a piece of land or whatever. The city's willing to donate, like even a field at this point. We're willing to do whatever we got here. We just want someplace safe to lay our heads where we don't have to worry about, for example, my passenger window getting shattered out or their trailer being shattered out. Cory moved us to where we currently are. Sure Cory remembers moving day. It was a blast. Not really. It was so disorganized. But we made it happen. The next morning, we woke up to community members who owns houses just like you guys do, threatening us, telling us that we're nothing but drug addicts. I don't know about anybody else who's ever been in recovery, like, I'm pretty sure you're proud of your time, right? I'm proud of my 10 months, sorry, 10 months sober. I'm proud of Sasha's four months. Yeah, it's not much, but it's better than not sober at all. And it's a fight. What's up?
I can't imagine that's easy to get up there and tell people about your failures, right? To admit how bad things are. But I'm going to ask some of the questions that people have asked and I'm going to ask some of the ones that I know they're thinking. And I apologize that I'm asking bold questions, but I just want to get bold answers. We're looking for bold action, okay?
Check it out Cory, I'll tell you the same thing that I told my family. And every one of the five of them that I know of that are here can tell you the same thing. I told them, "Don't worry about getting up and speaking. I'll be our voice." Somebody's got him.
You know, I've reached out to you. I've bonded a little bit with you over the last four weeks, I would say. I went from trying to harass the homeless to trying to get to know them a little bit and finding us solutions. Along the way, I found out they were people. And I liked Adrian because Adrian is a natural leader. She is the leader of the group. And I'll be honest, I don't love this group, okay? But she's a natural leader. And when I said, "Hey, we're going to have a moving day and we're going to clean up and this is what we're going to do," she did what she was supposed to do. So Adrian, if there was a city-sponsored camp somewhere, are you, as an inhabitant of that, going to help make sure it stays clean? Because if it looks like it did on Skid Row, nobody's going to like it.
So check it out Cory, when I met you, I had been there for maybe three weeks total. And by the end of the first day, dude, I'd had enough of the trash. I was already trying to figure out how to get it out of there. You showing up with the trailer was fucking phenomenal, pardon my language, was phenomenal.
Keep it real.
And I greatly appreciate it. We all do.
Couple of questions for you. What would help you move forward?
People being willing to hire people who can't put an address down on an application.
Okay, next question. When is the last time that you applied for a job?
Just this afternoon.
Where was that, if you don't mind telling us?
Walmart, McDonald's, Zips.
You went to all those places today?
Walmart, McDonald's, and Zips are all online. So is North Forty. Unfortunately, most of the applications nowadays are online.
Raise your hand if you are either personally hiring at your business or the business where you work is currently hiring. Okay? And keep your hand in the air if you're hiring at least five positions. Okay? Has anybody hired 70 people? Where's Walmart? They've got 70 open positions, okay? That's true. So, next question for you there Torch. What, what is your stumbling block? What is right now keeping you from getting out?
Probably the fact that I care way too much. I've known Sasha, don't shake your head at me. I saw that. I've known Sasha and her other half since they were kids. I've known a couple others since they were kids. I pretty much raised them. And I was a kid myself. Honestly, the fact that most of us have lost hope. Not in just ourselves, but in the community that we live in. We hear, "There's street trash, there's thieves, there're drug addicts." We hear all this negative stuff that's said about us. But nobody sees us when we're out and about in the middle of the night when we can't sleep because we've got insomnia or our minds won't shut up, picking up trash or cleaning up the parks or cleaning up dirty needles from other people and risking being stabbed. Like, I've gotten stabbed with god only knows how many dirty needles over the years. This isn't the first town I've been homeless in. Would I like to be the last town I'm homeless in? Heck yeah. Because then I won't be homeless anymore. I love the community. I love Colville's mindset. But like I said, even the homeless, though you don't want to see us, we're still part of the community.
Any landlords in the room with a house to rent? Anybody?
Heck, even a plot out of there.
Okay, hang on a second. Mr. Carpenter, an expert in low-income housing. You have a rental available right now?
I, I don't have anything available right now, but I'm actively cleaning up five residences.
When will the first one of those be available?
Before you answer his question, you need any help with that? Right?
Hey, hey.
Everybody.
I've got a deal for you. No, seriously. Tom, I, I want a little bit of a discount. I am a car dealer, okay? But I'll make a deal with you, Adrian. I think that this room is interested in you and what you're going to do with your life. So I'll make you a deal tonight. If Tom will rent you one of his houses, I will personally pay your rent for the next six months. But wait, hang on. Here's the deal. Here's the deal. You got to let me come see you every week. I want to look inside your house. I want, I want to be, send some people that are life coaches to help you. I want to see if you give the ultimate handout, could that make a difference for somebody, okay? Adrian, are you willing to do that?
Yeah.
Tom, are you willing to do that? Okay, I'm willing to put my money where my mouth is and cover your rent and your tillies for the next six months. I would like for some people, hang on, to donate some furniture, okay? So I went and toured a place, they call it the Shiloh Church. I'm not from here, that means nothing to me. But it was used as clean and sober housing. It was something we were looking at a project for housing. And when I walked in, it was dark, it was gloomy, it smelled bad. It was a prison with carpet is almost kind of what it felt like for me. And so, I want to make sure, I want to test you Adrian. I'm going to test the homeless population. I've been lied to before. One of your friends still owes me 60 bucks. P.S. So, I'll pay for the place and I want you to let people come see you. I want them to talk to you. I want to come in there with my camera and ask how you're doing. And when you have a bad day, I want to record that. When you have a good day, I want to record that too.
Check it out, if he's willing to not only rent me a property, I'll even give you the okay to put cameras in it.
I don't want cameras. I don't want cameras. This is Colville. We want guns, not cameras, okay? So, I, I don't, and please don't applause for me. This is not, Adrian, I want to see what you're doing. Everybody in here wants to know what would happen if you had a chance, okay? So.
I'd run with it.
Well, prove it, okay? We're all going to watch. I'm going to post your video every week on the Be Better Facebook page and we're going to follow Adrian's life and see, okay, if somebody's giving the ultimate gift, can they do something with it? So Adrian, you're not only going to let me down, you let everybody in this room down if you screw this up, so.
Check it out Cory, above everybody else, no offense to any of you, only people I'd be letting down are those in the same situation.
You need to be a leader. I've said you are a natural leader. I know that you are. I cannot wait to see what you do with this.
And I've told you, I'd take the responsibility if you needed it, but I didn't want it. I don't want the power, I don't want the responsibility. But I'll willingly take that responsibility. Because I know, just like Sasha, who's 22, mind you, I deal with people who are 16 to 25 calling me mom. I've got somebody who's 37, mind you, I'm only 31, calling me mom, asking me for advice. Like, I'm Sasha's therapist most days. Her and her other half. Because I know what they're going through.
You know, Adrian, you are the leader, okay? So you have the chance now to make a difference, not just in your life, but in your daughters and your kids and their kids, okay? So, please, I'm cheering you on. I'm going to be your biggest cheerleader and we're going to come on this journey with you. Thank you for coming up here and sharing your story.
Not a problem Cory.
Okay, so, elephant in the room. She said that I moved a homeless camp. Okay, look, I drive a Chevy Colorado. It doesn't pull trailers. I can assure you, I didn't move a single car or RV. However, I may have organized something like that. It was a bad idea. It ended up next to some residences. And those residences, just in three days, have had to, I am so sorry. It is terrible. It's terrible, okay? So, here is what I want to propose as a solution before we go back to community input. So, I am prepared to, with a group of concerned citizens, to pick up every single trailer tomorrow and get these moved to a permanent location. Now, I'm not the city attorney, I'm not the mayor. I have absolutely no power than to ask you to push, okay? Here is the water treatment plant. I don't know of a bigger piece of land owned by the city that's right at the city limits. I'm not sure where the best spot is. But there are gates and that makes people in the community a little more comfortable.
You might not make any of the homeless, because some of us have been impoverished. So out of curiosity, what also would be put on this piece of land?
Here's what I'm thinking with our super generous commissioners, is the city can volunteer a piece of land. Home Street said they'll, they'll meet them where they're at. Rural Resources will provide services. I have enough community donations or interest in providing porta-potties and dumpsters that we can go that route. Or, I think that this land can be developed for a very cheap cost. We can bring in some rock, bring in some gravel, park these trailers on top of there. And that way, we go back to be able to enforce our regulations on the rest of the city. Now, I am so sorry, this is close to me. It's close to the Javays, it's close to the Trents. But I think there's enough area there that it can be separated. Maybe even on this road, but I think we're getting out of the city of Colville limits there. There's a new solar installation. If you end up there, don't touch the solar panels. So, that is my best solution, just to study this on the outside looking in. Parking this behind Walmart next to some families with kids, it's a horrible idea. And I'm sorry you had to put up that for a couple of days. Nobody wants a homeless camp in their neighborhood. If we don't do something, they'll be in every neighborhood. They'll be on every street. We all agree that a homeless camp, that the number of homeless are going to grow as we move into the future.
Cory, the city also owns the property.
To the right. I, my green box does not go all the way around this. So everywhere here is city land and all the way back over. I couldn't draw her good.
And before you came, Rural Resources has a mobile home court in that property.
I just heard about that the other day. So, there may even be some infrastructure there that could be developed. I'm not saying this is the only thing we can do, but we got to do something. So, we heard from Mr. Montgomery, we're going to hear from someone else that Martin versus Boise says, "You got to provide a place." So, man, I don't, I don't love a homeless camp. Mr. Mayor, when you first presented this earlier in the year, it was a very unpopular idea. I was angry. And my neighbors were angry. And then, you know, I woke up a couple of weeks ago and I looked outside and I realized, "We already had a homeless camp." What am I fighting? Okay, we already have one. It's not sanctioned, there's no services, there's no restroom, there's no dumpsters. So, I know that a homeless camp in a small town in Colville, Stevens County, is not going to be a super popular idea. But guys, we already have one. If we don't do it, we're going to have problems here. They're going to be moving in there, they're going to be moving behind me, they're going to be at the park. I mean, you're a block off the park yourself. You know, this has been in your backyard. So, we've all been affected by that. It's time to do something. Mr. Mayor, council members that are still in the building, if myself and a group of concerned citizens could help you in any way of making this happen, we would. I believe there are businesses that would donate the gravel. I believe businesses would help the labor and would do whatever it took because we are a community, we do care about each other. We might not like the look of the homeless, but I'm confident, just from hearing all of you tonight, that you care, okay? That you care about the people. And it's no longer okay to look at the way these people are living and turn our heads the other way. So, let's do something. So, that's my best solution. I want to turn the mic over now to Ian Pickett and take my licks.
Guys, I'm a hero. I'm here because I care about this town. Hero or villain?
You're clapping for Ian.
So Cory, I really had nothing negative to say to you or about you until that last little spiel. It appeared really scripted, but I came here, I brought my family here to run away from the problem that we're seeing growing. I, I, as soon as I got here, my kids were threatened at the park and a few listening to clean that problem up. I'm a believer that when you build something, they'll keep coming. And then when you can't house what you built, they'll spill out onto the streets. But I'm also a believer in that we're not seeing the totality of the issue. And I think that a lot of us here, including myself, who came here for better living, don't understand that this is a problem we have to face now. And it's not, the homelessness is not the problem. It's a symptom of the problem. The problem has been growing for years. And we, we're banging on the local leaders and we're, we're telling the cops to do stuff. But we've leveraged our own power for so long for comfort that they no longer have power. So you're asking cops to violate people's constitutional rights. And some of you don't seem to realize, because I've heard things about roadblocks and checkpoints and rounding them up, putting them on buses. But regardless of whether you like someone or not, they have constitutional rights. And a lot of you believe those constitutional rights were bestowed upon them by your God. I believe in constitutional rights. And if you believe in constitutional rights, those apply to everybody, whether you like them or you don't. And the cops have to abide by that, the mayor has to abide by that, the city council has to abide by that. And if you're going to preach about it for everybody else, you have to preach about it for everyone. And I think one of the biggest problems we're seeing locally, and Cory actually brought it up earlier when he said, "Don't let the outsiders take over." It's ironic because he admitted he's an outsider himself. I'm an outsider, but I spent eight years in the military. I have 21 years in law enforcement. I earned every damn dollar I had when I brought it here to bring my family to a better place. I brought it here because I'm an American. I don't give a shit where I'm from. And some of you can't get over that. There are no outsiders. This is a community of Americans. Some of them are Martins and we don't, we don't get along with all of them. But what Cory did was exemplify part of the problem that we're seeing right now. Don't let the outsiders take over. That is part of the problem. That is part of the social structure here that doesn't allow for us to see that this problem is in Colville. And as much as I don't want to see it, as much as I ran from it, now we have to do something about it. So I don't know what that answer is, but I know there's a middle ground between giving handouts and rounding people up and sending them out behind Walmart, whatever else you want to do. So we have to find that middle ground, and we have to get rid of the irrational behavior and irrational suggestions and irrational decisions, including myself. And we have to find that middle ground as a community to make it work. Calling people outsiders won't work. Getting up here and doing scripted stuff and commercials, or whatever the hell you want to call what that was just was, isn't gonna work. So I don't know what the answer is. I'm more than happy to work with people, but I guarantee the answer starts and stops with us not treating each other like outsiders and transplants and whatever other adjective you guys come up with to describe people who dared move into your area because they're freaking Americans. I earned my right here. Everybody here has a right to be here. If somebody needs help, let's help them. They have to be willing to help themselves, I get that. Find that middle ground. That's all I can say. Enough with the commercials. Because that's all we're seeing here tonight is a commercial. Thank you.
Thank you, Ian. All right, let's change this up a little bit. Leslie, you ready? It is your turn.
Hello, my name's Leslie Lamardo, and I live in Stevens County with my family. And, uh, wow, sitting through the past couple hours, a lot's already been said that I thought maybe I could say. But here's what I really believe with my heart. We're all made in the image of God. We are all individual people. We all have had hard times. We have all had struggles that we have had to overcome. Giving mercy and compassion to people with no accountability is worthless. Finding a lot where we can just shove everyone we want to call those people and letting them continue to do what they're doing doesn't help them. That is not helping them. Everyone who was so verbal about their rights and everything else, how many people are living in your house right now that have been on the street for the past six months? How many people have you opened your doors to? How many people have you let in your house, shoot up on your couch, go to the bathroom on your floor, or whatever that the city is experiencing? You don't want it in your house, and we don't want it in our city, because it's not okay. There is a right and there is a wrong. And yeah, we can work together to find a solution, but we need a plan. No more talk, we need action. And the councilmen, the councilwomen, and the mayor, they are paid by us. They work for us. Let's say, we want a plan, we want something on paper, and we want things done that make improvements, or we recall you and we find someone else who will. We've listened to a lot of stories, a lot of commercials, call them what you want. The reality is, a lot of people that are living on the streets are choosing to stay that way. And when they are given opportunities, they throw them back in your face. I'm not saying they don't deserve a chance, or they don't deserve help, but they do have to be held accountable. So don't stick people in free houses and give them free food and not make them get a job. I mean, let's come up with some steps, but let's stop talking, let's have a meeting, and let's put it on paper, and let's do it. Let's enforce the laws that are there for the protection of everyone here. It's not okay that people can come in here and do things that we wouldn't do, but they have the freedom to do that, and we can't, we don't have the freedom to say that you can't? No, we do, enough is enough. It's not okay. It needs to be dealt with. It's not gonna be easy, and it's not gonna be quick, but let's get moving on the process. And if there are people that aren't willing to work, then let's get rid of them and get someone else.
Well said, Leslie. I think you represent the way a lot of us feel here. Let's hear from one of our law enforcement partners.
Good evening, I'm Ben Cosby. Um, I'm a local resident, I live in Colville. I've lived here my entire life. I'm proud to be a Stevens County resident, I've been all over the country. It's one of my favorite places to be. So I know a lot of you guys have asked, why aren't the cops doing anything? Um, I can only speak for my personal opinion. Is Danny Sanders still in here, or did he go?
No, he's outside.
He's outside? All right, so six years ago, I became a cop, and I met Danny. And me and him have had quite a history. But the problem is that, Danny, you can't take anything from him. We've written him tickets, we've pulled him over, we've put him in jail, we've taken his cars. There's nothing else for Danny to lose, and that's the problem. If you're asking, why aren't we writing Danny a ticket for peeing on the side of the road? Because it's not gonna do anything, okay? Danny's not gonna lose any money from it. The courts can't get anything out of Danny anymore. And that's our biggest problem. Our jail's full, there's nowhere to take these people, okay? And as a community, from where I see it, I think one of our biggest problems is that we need to have a good solution of where these people can go to get help, and if they don't want to help, there's nothing we can do right now, because we have no solution. And that's something that we're gonna have to spend money on. The problem is that people are always like, why aren't we doing anything? Well, I have no idea. But once these people hit this point, where's somebody? So, Kim, when you're at the lowest point of your low, and I come as a law enforcement officer, and I give you a piece of paper that says, "Hey, you owe the county $150," what are you gonna do with that piece of paper? You're gonna throw it on the ground. What am I gonna do, write them a littering ticket? That doesn't do anything. So that's why one thing that everybody asks is, why is there no enforcement? Because there's no sort of recourse for us to get anything out of these people when they don't have anything. You ask, why aren't we towing their cars? Well, where are they gonna go? What, am I gonna kick somebody out in the middle of the night, impound their RV, and be like, "Good luck, bro, I hope you don't freeze to death tonight"? I'm not a monster, I'm not gonna do that, okay? I care about people, that's why I do this. So that's something that you have to remember as far as law enforcement. We want to help. I know that from this side of the room, there's guys that really care about this problem. A lot of these people have seen me hundreds of times, I go every night and talk to them. But it's not gonna solve the problem if we're just taking something from them with no solution. Then we're just kind of the bad guys. I don't want to be the bad guy, but I do want to help. And I'm a big fan of, hey, if you're not gonna help yourself, I'm gonna maybe make you get help, because at some point we're gonna have to, because I am now responsible for you. So that's something that we really need to discuss. I know that there's a lot of talk about politicians and legal stuff, and it's all super confusing. If you really want to be part of this community, something that I never see, nobody ever comes to court. Look at the docket of a court, show up. If you want these people to be put somewhere, come and help your officers. I've put people away where it's an empty courtroom, and I'm the only one that seems to care. Look at the next court cases that are coming up, show up. If you want to know why your prosecutor doesn't care about these cases, because he looks at an empty room where nobody's there, and he knows that he can just run again and be voted in, and there's no personal accountability. So I've spent 10, 20 hours on a case working extremely hard to have nobody sit in that courtroom, and for the prosecutor not to care? Well, then I don't care. And that's the problem that we've run into in this community, is until tonight, nobody has cared. All these cops, everybody here that works on all these resources, we go out there every night. Every night I'm out there in the middle of the street at 3:00 in the morning dealing with assaults in front of someone's house. Nobody knows about it. Nobody knows about half the stuff that goes on here, because until it becomes a boiling point, nobody is concerned until it's in front of their door. So I, like to say, we need to come up with a solution. But people just wanting us to write tickets is not a solution, because there's nothing to get out of them. So until we have some sort of punishment, or we come up as a community and make a decision that we're gonna hold them accountable, and most of these people aren't bad people. I've had people that I put in jail help me on the side of the road. It's all about accountability that we need to, as a community, hold them to that. So take an interest in your legal system, look at the court cases, decide what you care about, and then be involved in it. If this was a court case right now, this would be huge, because then the prosecutor would be like, "Wow, I should pay attention to this criminal trespass that was on Corey's lot." People care about this. If the community cares, the legal system cares. So I would like to see more involvement from the community members in the law enforcement. If you haven't done a ride-along, I know right now it's hard with COVID, do a ride-along, come in and talk to your officers. Ask them about case law, ask them why things aren't being done. There's a reason, and they'll explain it to you. And happy, I'm always happy to answer questions, because before I was a cop, I had no idea about half this stuff. And then I became a cop, and I was like, "Wow, this is a lot harder than I thought it was gonna be." So that's what I would say. Get involved in the community, in legal system. And we have so many things that we need to build for our facilities. Our jail is tiny, we don't have enough room. We don't have room to put, hold people accountable. And that's a problem. So we need to fix that thing on the bottom before we can start towing cars and writing tickets, because we have nothing to do with those people, okay? So that's where we need to go. And I know that, uh, it's tough. I don't want your guys' jobs at all, so. All right, guys.
Very well said, thank you, Ben. You know, I heard if the community's involved, they care about it, right? We've got to show them. We can't have elections where 40% of the people show up. If only 40% of the people can mail back something that's free to mail, okay? How many of those people are gonna actually make a phone call to their commissioner, or call their council member, or call the mayor, or stop by tomorrow and ask for change? This is what it takes. We've all been looking the other way, this is somebody else's problem. Martin versus Boise says, "Hey, we can't do anything about this." So get involved, that's why we're here, that's why we're talking about it tonight, is to get everyone involved. Uh, switching gears again, do we have a lawyer here from the Northwest Justice Project? Okay, maybe not. Let's keep moving on down the list then. How about Mike Babbitt? Oh, here's Mike. Mike, welcome to the podium. Thank you for being here.
My name is Mike Babbitt, and my wife and I are fairly new to the area. We moved here because our first trip over to Colville, we fell in love with the place. And I can tell you what we bring here. Uh, I'm a retired police detective from Boise, Idaho. I have a bachelor's degree in criminal justice and a master's degree in police management and administration. I bring my retirement income here. I bring a good quality of life, an honest person. And what I don't bring here is shit in the parking lots and homeless trash all over the roads, where we just moved here to avoid that lifestyle on the other side of the state. Um, we like it here. I can tell you that if you allow this homeless process to continue, it's only gonna get worse. And when I hear, um, comments about this, Martin versus Boise, Boise City, and I know how this works, because I worked the homeless project, homeless projects that we had in Boise. Um, first of all, the Ninth Circuit is the most liberal court in the land. And so you could go down on Market Street in San Francisco and take a crap in front of a police officer, and they're not gonna do a thing about it. So they're letting you, they're dictating what policies you're gonna have in your city, which I don't think is right. And Martin versus Boise, and what you have here on the very first slide that we saw about the homeless encampment, is apples and oranges. The court said that you can't arrest a person who is going to sleep in a park. If you research those defendants, and I'm familiar with a few of them, they were drug users, drug addicts. They were in the park sleeping when they weren't supposed to be. There was the Boise Rescue Mission that had openings. There was the Our Savior, um, which is another homeless shelter in downtown Boise. The Presbyterian Church has a homeless shelter. You have to be sober when you go there, and yes, they want to preach to you. But there are a number of resources, and the homeless community chooses to do their own thing whenever they want to. And anytime the police come to talk to them about it, they become vulgar, just like the two individuals that were here earlier that said, "F you." So it's apples and oranges comparison. The Ninth Circuit did not tell you that you can't not enforce your local city codes. And if you think that that's what they said, I think that you and your city prosecutor ought to research that, because it's not what it says. If you don't do something, it's only gonna get worse. And I, I understand that people go through trauma. I've gone through trauma. My post-traumatic stress is no different than some of the other people. I see that most of them have left. But your trauma that you suffered is no different than mine. But yet I can still be, and many of us can still be, in our societies, follow the rules, and live a productive life. Addiction, incarceration, trying to stay clean. Uh, I'm sorry, maybe I'm just a little jaded, but I see a lot of excuses there and not a lot of responsibility. And, uh, so I hope to see that the city will allow, the city leaders will allow their police officers to go out. And in that picture, there's a number of code violations and city ordinances that can be, um... You can enforce the law, and to say that it doesn't matter, well, it does matter, because we have, what, 200, 300 people here tonight that say it matters? So I think that, uh, I think that it can be handled. It is gonna take a partnership between a lot of different, um, entities, but you need to do something. And I want to leave you with just six names, and if the media's here, I want you to research these names and publish what I'm talking about, because I'm very intimate with these cases. Eric Virgil Hall versus Lynn Heneman. Lynn Heneman was a flight attendant for American Airlines from New York. She was staying at the Boise Riverside in the jurisdiction in the area that I was working. She was bound, raped, and killed by a homeless man in downtown Boise, Idaho. Daryl Payne and Samantha Mayer. She was walking home from church, she had a Bible in her hand, she's 22 years old. She was bound, raped, and killed by Daryl Payne. Patrick Zacharias. Same thing. Caitlin Lynn Jackson. A jogger that was running the Boise foothills that was captured, bound, raped, and killed by a homeless man in Boise, Idaho. Am I painting with a broad brush? Maybe. But if you ask all three of these girls' parents, "Did we do the right thing? Were we effectively trying to help our homeless situation?", those parents are gonna tell you no. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. So just so to show you some of a little bit of caution to still involve. So, guys, it is 8:30. I noticed our crown is spinning, but I still want to give everybody a chance to speak that wants to speak. Come on forward. I've got four people, five people left on my list plus one. Come on up. If you want to speak, I want you to come sit next to our handsome mayor in this front row right here. Oh, okay, it's this one. I know y'all are confused when I said handsome. Uh, so Bridget Lamson, can I have you come up and be the next speaker, Bridget? And then everybody else, line up in your chairs who want to speak. Aaron, if you want to get up here, John Smith, you want to stage, Tori, and VG. Oh, okay, you know who it is.
You're right, Bridget Lamson.
Okay, so Bridget, oh, are you gonna let him go first?
That's okay.
You're right. All right, whatever. Tell us your name. Lisa, thank you so much for being here. Sorry for any problems that we've caused you. Let's work together for a solution. Thank you.
You did ask me to speak.
No, absolutely.
You put me in a position, you put me into be both on behalf of the homeless and Habitat homeowners.
I'm incredibly angry with you, because you knowingly put me in the position. You called me Friday, and you asked me to come here and speak. You came here, you asked me to come here and speak because I am one of the co-writers of the County Homeless Plan. I have been involved with the county in writing the homeless plan and been on the homeless task force since 2010. I have had experience with homeless and myself. I have been in a situation where I've been with fleeing domestic violence, and I was raped, and I was homeless as a result, because of my shame and a lot of guilt and everything else that goes along with being raped. You called me Friday, and you asked me to come here and speak. You then in turn facilitated a move that really endangered those homeless individuals. And you put me in a position where I have to defend the homeless people, because I am on that committee, and I fully believe in them and support them. There are many different levels of homeless, and there's a lot of people here that you don't see. There's a lot of people here that are served within our communities that you don't see and that you don't know about. And when you're talking about homeless, you're talking about a select few that are visible and are offensive to you and your lifestyle, and shame on you. You put me in the position, as I am the director of Habitat for Humanity. He placed those individuals across from Habitat and our Habitat homeowners here. So as the director, I need to protect those families. Those families who had no other opportunity to become homeowners than to work their butts off and put in sweat equity and go through financial counseling and do all kinds of hard work. And it took at least two years for them to build their home before they were able to move into their home and become homeowners who pay a mortgage and contribute to the local tax base.
Is there a homeowner in the line? It's been down by my house for six years.
No. No, absolutely not. And I am advocating for both, and that's why I am so angry with Corey, because he knowingly put me in that position. And that's why I am so angry with Cory because he knowingly put me in that position. I have to advocate for both. No, their home is not more important than yours. None of your homes are more important than theirs and vice versa. This is an issue that we all have to deal with. The 10-year plan for ending homelessness has been revised multiple times. The first year that we did it, not all the commissioners signed off on it. Is it a golden goose? No. Does it have all of the answers? Absolutely not. Does it have a budget? Does it have all of the moving parts that you would expect a plan to have? Absolutely not. It is vastly written for the entire county to provide guidance for people, for organizations, and I belong to a lot of them, to get together, to come up with plans, to deal with different legs of homelessness, to address it. We had, we served 50 people through a red cross this last year. 50 people who lost their homes due to fire. About a third of the people who have lost their homes due to fire come to us for assistance. One-third, and we served 50. We don't see those. You guys aren't angry with them, but they're served and they're people too. Everybody here is a person too.
I'm an immature, I made some mistakes. I'm sorry. I took the bold move to try to get as many people here as I possibly could and let you know this is important. Lisa's absolutely right, though. I am so sorry. I'm going to put this mic down and turn this over to you.
Self-serving commercials, car sales. That's too much.
I know in life you cannot please everyone. I'm with a stranger. I driving from job and I see parking lot and lot of people here, so I curious. So I step through that door and I see a lot of good people who want to help and find solution. And the Bible saying, "If house divide, it's fall." So how we can help anybody if we divide ourselves? So to bring good solution in your heart, that's a good. But if we judged each other or came here to, for glory and say, "God knows split glory." I'm from Estonia, small, small country. Six hours you can drive and cross. We don't have popular people, no movie actors, no sport people. We have nobody. Small country, but I love that country. And I love America. I come here, when I come here, I tell everybody, "If they give me place near to the fence, I will build roof and I start from there." And I did. I did like that. I came to Snahomish. I like garage sales. I pay cheap. So I driving and we hungry and I see on the sidewalk apples go to the road because tree near to the sidewalk. So I stop and we eat apples on somebody driveway and house burn out. Somebody blocked me behind and I scared. Soon as he blocked behind my car, I cannot drive away. I'm scared and he come and he tell them, "What are you doing here?" He told me, "Nice fellow." I say, "Eat apples." And he said, "That's yours apples." I say, "No." And he said, "Then why you doing it?" I say, "I'm hungry." He go to the car and write something. I pray and thank God, "No, no." I say, "He go, please." Sorry, I have a bill, but I cry too. He give me a business card. His name is John. His wife is president high power in America, president of high power in America. And they live in Bellevue. It's happened in Snahomish and he's came and give me card and he tell me, "You know, I like you. All these apples is yours and anybody stop you." Show him my card and he left. I kind of stay long time there, not feel good. And same time I feel very good. I want to prove to that stranger guy, so I'm good. And he already left. So I go home, bring with eater, cut grass on his property. He buy property for investment. So I cut grass, have pruned his trees. I never see them. I start visit that property and take care of it. And finally, one time he show up and he said, "Whoa, you done here lot, you prune trees, cut grass. Why you doing that?" I say, "Oh, you treat me good, you give me apples." We become friends. I learn, I not know much, but I learn when you bound yourself to God solo. Everything you whisper, but he is here, no need scream. And everything suddenly become good. You not looking to be blessed, you looking to bless somebody. Then suddenly somehow you look round and you in right spot, everything start better for you. When you broke and have nothing, you help somebody and you enjoy, you start enjoying it. Jesus say, "Who sacrificed with me will live with me." No blessing without sacrifice. So I, who I am, I'm nobody. But I thank God for you, for all of you, because you come here not for yourself, for somebody. But I tell you true, they rob me homeless. I come here to Colville and I have money, I have 20 bucks. I take shower in that hotel, that fellow been here, happy. That's hotel $6 repaying shower. He sold me property. He give me job for sign. What you call them? Danny? What's his name?
Danny.
Yeah. He treat me good. I meet him and I meet Tate, maybe somebody know Tate, they treat me wonderful. I meet a lot of people here. I bought house behind sun rental and well condemned by city. But I have 20 bucks when I come here. And I bought it and I dig sewer to the alley. It's a long distance. The city came and say, "What are you doing?" I say, "I need sewer." So they dig sewer for me, dig sewer for me and help me to hook up, hook up my water and I scream, "Hallelujah, I have a water." Not in house, speak it near to drive sidewalk. And it give me so much joy. And I thank God for light. If you look in my door, light outside right to my front door. In the house been that time no light. So I say, "God's so good, even that pool he put in the front." So in the evening we have a light inside. So we all go through the troubles. We been good and bragging about our success and we been down and scream God for help. All of us. But I tell you truth, so a drug, it's a bad. Homeless, it's different circumstance. And I know one of people drop and make dirty CT and all that. And they no help. I invite homeless, they put underwear in my toilet and flush. And I try help, it's never work. I tell you truth from my heart, never work. I want to kiss them, hug, and it's not work. But God loves them. God loves them and he die for them and for me. And I remember people who's change. Very few. One person I pick up in the park, he's now in Air Force. He used to live with me and spend every penny in the bar. And I tell them, "John, if you have son and you pay all bills and he spend every penny in the bar, you be happy." And he say, "No." I say, "You're not my son." So he pick up everything, walk away, walk away. And later he call now he in Air Force and he really happy boy. So God changed people. God choose when you truly bound to him. And it's not church, it's your relationship with God, every dead homeless person. If he find God, he find answer.
VG, I just have to say that you are one of the best neighbors we've ever had in our life, Brandon and I. And we thank you so much for your story. But we got moved to the next person.
Yeah.
And you done stuff for us when we lived next to you and we love you.
I love you all and we just, God bless.
Thank you so much.
If I can help, I do construction. I'm not the best. But if you need help, I come free and help. I offer what I can. I can help. I can build tiny house, pour foundation, do sewer, whatever you want. I have a dump truck.
Who wants to take VG up on those free offers? Tom Carver, do you hear this? Offering free work. VG, thank you so much for being here, being a part of it. Okay, I am sorry, it is getting late. Our crowd is dwindling, we're losing our power. I'm going to enforce a hard three-minute timer from here on out. We have four speakers remaining and then we're going to give somebody else a chance to speak too. So Bridget, the floor is yours.
Hello, my name is Bridget Lamson and I'm going to make this quick. Most people have covered most everything I was going to say anyway. This is a global problem. It is not going to go away. There is laws in place that are for the homeless. There are laws in place to make us do our civil duties. We have obligations in our community for each other. We have the tools, we have what we need to come together and bring it together. My experience in the last 40 years of living in this community has not been a very good one. I have suffered for 20 years by the hands of the authorities. I'm not going to be poking fingers or anything, but I have lost six grandchildren for no reason. My son was convicted of a crime he did not commit and was sentenced and has left him without his children because of that sentencing. This community has terrorized many people in their community and it's not okay. But I'm not going to hold anybody accountable for what they did to me. I went through those and that brought marrow to my bones and strength within me to do what I have to do now. And what we have to do is come together and build a community that we are. My family brought me here when I was 10. I was angry because they took me away from my life, but I grew to love this place no matter how bad it knocked me down. My family is a problem, they own businesses here. But nonetheless, I have to be able to be the one that's going to pull myself out of situations that I'm in. But the burdens that have been placed upon us through actions within our community and monies being withheld and time and space being withheld has all kind of got us where we're at right now. It's all of our problem. We are all one and it's not going to go anywhere. Coming together under one roof, under one nation, that's what we need to do. That's what my grandfather fought in the war for. That's what he stood for. He died just 2018, 2019. The city threatened me so badly with my beliefs through their attempts to clean up our park that set me into a place where I don't ever want to go again. And it set me in a place to put me up to the challenge to step up and do for you, for all of us together, what we're supposed to do. And that is take care of ourselves, each other, us, all of us. We need to build the grassroots that we know we have. We need to find the love with inside of us to get over the things that we, the differences we have and grow together in our differences. I am willing to stand up beside, behind every person that told me to stand up and do something if I wasn't doing something about it, to stand up and do it. I'm standing up to do it. Come and join me. Ian Pickett, he left. He was one of the ones that said, "Hey, do something, put your mouth, you know, do something." I'm trying to do something. Let's do something. Let's build our community out of love. Let's do our civil duties. Let's be there for each other. I love you.
Thank you, Bridget. Appreciate you sharing your story. Who's going to be on next? Aaron, is that you? It's a cute sweater you got on.
Oh, thank you. Finally, I have the ginger hair to go with it. All right, I'm a disabled, high-functioning, autistic submarine veteran. I am a steward of Timberland and I am a stand-up philosopher. I think a lot of our problem isn't actually that we need more establishmentarianism because a lot of this is a failure of the establishment. What we tend to do is we tend to reward failures of establishment with more money and more lease to have more establishment. It's a never-ending cycle, it doesn't help. Right now, a single person, say a generous Gentile like yourself who just offered to pony up six months of rent, cannot actually help most of these people with their land because the health department stands in the way and says, "You need a $10,000 septic system at minimal and you need a $30,000 well drilled and it's going to take at least a year for this to happen." Now, if I were one of these landowners who owned hundreds and hundreds of acres and I just had a bunch of it felled by bogging, I wouldn't have any problem saying, "Hey, you guys can steward this area, just do a community stewardship. Nobody has to necessarily particularly do a lot, but you guys can go ahead and live your Walden lifestyle, just like Thoreau wrote." Because quite frankly, this is America and that's how things were meant to be. Me personally, we don't have anyone from the health department here, do we? Okay. As a landowner, I am using what rights I believe that I have earned through my service and I am living on my land off the grid. All of us off-gridders are lawbreakers. All of us. Because we aren't willing to live on a grid where we are enforced by the health department to buy products that we don't need. Composting toilets have existed for a very long time now. Our health department allows exactly two manufacturers to sell their product in this state. And you have to go through a whole process to promise that you know how to handle a very, very simple device that just composts your turds. Not only that, but even if you have this setup, they require that you have, once again, a septic system for the mere act of taking your whiz from the bottle that comes with it and pouring it down there instead of digging a hole in your yard and pouring it there like every human has done for tens of thousands of years. We live in a time and a day and an age where a property owner has the right to basically freeze on his property unless you're willing to pony up money that you might not have. You have the right to freeze on your property, but if you do the basic human thing that we've been doing since the dawn of our existence and you put four walls up and you give yourself a roof to increase your odds of survival, now you're against the law because you didn't buy a product. I think that the answer is not more establishment, it's a little disestablishmentarianism. We just need to back off and let people live a third world life if that's what's actually going to allow them to survive. Because a third world living is a lot better than what they got in Seattle.
Thank you, Aaron, I appreciate it. Hey, quick update, I just got a text message from a business owner that was in the room that said that Adrian goes and passes the P test, she has a job next week too. So maybe we're going to see if something happens there, that's exciting. All right, who's next? Tell us your name, I don't know you.
I know, that's... My name is Tori.
Hi, Tori.
Hello. I moved to this area...
Hello. I moved to this area probably about a little over two years ago. I have been all across this country. Homelessness is not a new issue. In fact, over a half a million people experience homelessness in this country. So the thing about it is, I was homeless. I was addicted to drugs. I was a lot of that stuff. If you help yourself though, people will be more willing to help you. And I think that's a lot of what's happening here is, from the outside looking in, it's not looking like you're, the homeless population currently is helping yourselves. And there's a labor shortage. So jobs should not be an issue when every place is hiring. If this area is not working for you, there are multiple talents in this county. It's homelessness is a multifaceted issue. It is not just one thing or the other. It's not just mental health. It's not just substance abuse. It's not just being a shitty person. It is desperation, hopelessness. But as many people have pointed out, it falls to accountability as well. It is difficult to see because honestly, this is not the worst homeless problem I have, I have seen. I've lived in many cities where, in fact, I, I consider this glamping. This is not, you know, what it could be. I have lived behind an IHOP on the ground, you know? I, I worked very hard to get out of the situation I am in. And as you said, if the authoritarianism, I suppose, of permits and things like that do get into the way, that is actually a really good point. And I do believe, like, I have seen so many people in this community just because I, I don't get involved very often. I like to watch, who have helped people because they went out of their way to show that they wanted that help. Not necessarily. Everybody can come up here and tell a very great story about how it's this, that, and the third. Half the time, it's not the case. So all in all, I do believe as a community, we could probably get this sorted out. Honestly, that's all I have to say. Sorry, I'm not a public speaker.
Okay, we got two people left. Are we gonna close with Mr. Smith? That'll be perfect. Who's going next?
I'm Bonnie. I'm one of the Habitat at Home. I am not very happy with, with the people, individuals that are parked right across from my home. They are putting our children in danger. Especially there's someone on there who is step defender. They shouldn't be around the children. And number two, I have worked really hard to put my time and effort into this home so we're, we can call a place a home. Before we moved into the Habitat home, we have lived in a very mobiley home for nine years. We were sick all the time and we were getting to be very close to be evicted. But with the help of the Habitat, I was able to get, put my time and effort and with God's blessing, we were living in Habitat home for five years. But with the weekend crisis problem that had arrived, there's been a lot of police reports been called and there's been a lot of noise that was going on over there. And there was a lot of drinking, screaming. I would like to have our community be back to peaceful, not without the noises and just back to peaceful. And also, I want to also come up with solutions. Why not, I did some research online. There's sixty-five land out in Colville. Why not go out there and buy a couple of land, set up tiny home, set up bathroom, laundry room and shower for them. Also, set up some help center. Help center would be like for anything, counseling or set up donation. So why not we just have people go buy land and set up tiny home? Set up tiny homes for people who are disabled or people who have wheelchair. Have them be accessible for them. Have them have a home to call home. Because right now, winter is coming. If there are any hopeful individuals to live by fear and all these threats that we have to deal with. So that's my solution is ask you guys, find property and build tiny home and build bathroom, shower and water. Then we can have problems solved there.
Thank you very much. Great ideas. Hey, would anybody else like to speak?
Okay. So I am a mom of four. My husband works nights and I live in one of the Habitat houses. So to like go to dinner and then come home on Saturday and have drunk people fighting and people racing up and down my driveway where my kids should be able to ride their bikes, please don't pawn these people off on this another family, another situation because that was really hard. We haven't slept since they've been there because we're mortified of what we might wake up to, who's gonna show up on our door, who's finding out there what they're dropping. Like, it's awful to be, have people like this pawned off on you and you had, I had no warning. I couldn't do anything to try to help my kids understand that they are sick and they need help, but we can't help them because my first priority is my children and that's it. Like, I have to keep my children safe and they're not safe with those people that close to my home. I'm home alone with four kids, but my husband works nights and I don't feel safe in my own home.
Thank you very much. Okay, so we've heard a lot of stories tonight. We've heard some solutions. We've heard how we got here. We know that the homeless problem is very complex. There's a generational problem of mental health and alcohol abuse, drug abuse that we cannot address overnight. There's a housing crisis that we cannot build houses overnight. But I implore you to, what can you do, okay? I think everybody in here is hard, hopefully salted just a little bit tonight and that you can show a little more compassion to your fellow people. I know mine has. So what can you do? What's the next step? I wish I had your picture. So I grabbed this off the city website, okay? These are your current council members. This makeup is changing at the end of the year. But as the homeless plan said, this requires immediate urgent action. So please call, write, reach out to your council members and ask for immediate action. This requires immediate and bold action for something to get done. I don't have all the answers. I absolutely haven't handled this the right way. But I know that we're all here because we're concerned and we want better for our community. So this is what you can do. There's no magic wand, but you can reach out to these guys who said, hey, we wanna represent you and help make decisions. It was not my intention to offend any law enforcement commissioners, council members or the mayor tonight if it came across that way. I'm so sorry. I truly respect, we, we believe in the blue around here, okay? We believe in blue. I know you don't have easy jobs and these are hard problems. But please make a hard decision and let's get this, let's move forward with the solution immediately. Once again, I volunteer my services to you, Mr. Mayor. Me and a concerned group of gentlemen who can help you in any way that you ask. If you want me to go get donations, beat somebody to give us rock, help move trailers, I, I will beat on those doors and help you accomplish your mission. So let me know I can help you.
I volunteer as well.
Okay. Uh, uh, with this, raise your hand if you're willing to help be part of the solution. Mark. You're in the front of the room. So look, guys, we all wanna be part of the solution. There's not great answers. The best, the best proposal you heard from me was to find a way to move these individuals to the water treatment plant. And that might be an option. You're, I'm done. This is the last you're gonna hear from me tonight. Thank you for putting up with me for three hours. I'm so sorry it went long, but obviously this community cares. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Yes, we do care. There's one solution you haven't talked about. And that is my, first of all, my name is Muriel Meyer. I was born in Colville, raised in Curlew, so I'm very countryfied. Let's just put it that way. And I appreciate you saying that Colville has better hospitality or as good a hospitality as, what is it, South Carolina or wherever you're from? That's awesome. But here's the solution that I would like to offer anyone in this room. I work, I'm, maybe I shouldn't mention this. They might kick me out. I'm a board member of Hope Street. And I care about people. I was a manager at an apartment complex for HUD Housing. And one of the things that would happen every single winter, it was for people who had chronic mental illness and every single winter, there would be additional people there that were homeless. And I did not have the heart to kick them out. I just couldn't. And that wasn't, I mean, that wasn't politically correct, but anyway, whatever. So the solution that I came up with is I purchased a house. I had a basement and I invited a homeless person to live in my basement. Then, after a couple of years, this particular person I became friends with and we, whatever. But he is now upstairs in the room and I have a different homeless person in my basement. So one of the solutions is to make friends with people. And if you have a spare room in your garage, if you have a, any, any little section of anything, especially because we need an immediate solution, that would be taking one person off the street. Now, you get to vet them. You get to meet them. You get to choose. But open your home and let somebody come, stay warm. That's all I have to say.
Give yourselves a barrel of water being here and caring.
I told Cory, two minutes. You've heard from a lot of really important people. But there's one thing that I haven't heard from the front that needs to be said. Is that little lady over here with her four kids is actually the answer to homelessness. Ken Gallo, putting the safety of her family as the number one priority in her life. That is the end of homelessness. Now, it won't happen overnight. It'll take a generation. But that's how you fix it. And in fact, that Bible, the same preacher that suggested the, the whole story of the Good Samaritan also said that those of us who don't provide for those our own and specifically those of our in-house, that we've denied the faith and we're worse than an infidel. So those, there's another group of those people that often get shamed in this community. And that's those who are setting their family's safety and security as a priority. And somebody needs to say that you guys are the good guys. Now, that doesn't mean that we shouldn't show compassion to those who are, aren't as well off as we are. Because I moved here in 1990 as a homeless teen escaping domestic violence. I get it. I understand what the trauma feels like. I understand what the hardship is like. I understand what it's like to move into a community and feel judged. Well, those good people are feeling judged too. So the solutions that we use moving forward need to not shame them while at the same time, we're providing solutions for, for people who need a hand up and sometimes a foot in the butt. So thank you.